At exactly 6:30, according to the InformaCast clock on the wall, which is brand-new. Thank you, bond money. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? If those of you who are new, flags over that way. I pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are starting with public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda for a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one-half hour, thirty minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comments. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or a student. Do we have any students? Do we have any members of the public? I guess I didn't have to read that. Thank you. I'm looking at our board secretary. That's great. Moving on then, we have remarkable three extended public comments this evening. I'd like to call up Astrid Lys, our Saline area school's Spanish teacher, Bea Medino, and her crack team.
Now you can hear me. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. We appreciate this opportunity to talk to all of you. I have here my team. We came here to say thank you for approving our Puerto Rico language and culture trip last month. We had so much fun, and I had Tenoras and Tibanes, and I had the pleasure to teach all these kids since they were in sixth grade, seventh grade, and it was an amazing experience to share with all of them. So I will let them talk about what we did, how we extend our classroom experience there.
Okay, yeah, so my name is Michael Bryant. I'm an eleventh grader at Saline High School. And like Senor Lys just mentioned, thank you so much for everything that you've done to allow this project to take place. It is very appreciated by our entire Spanish program and all of the students who went on the trip. So we're just gonna give some details of what we did on the trip, and what we learned, and why it was a valuable experience.
Hi, my name is Lizzy Sandru. I'm also a junior. So to start off, on our first day, we had a very full day. So we started off early in the morning on a downtown walking tour of San Juan. So there's some pictures there of like the colorful buildings and the views. We learned a lot about the architecture, and specifically in about like how the windows and doors correlate with like the time period the building was built. Then we had some time for lunch to explore downtown, interact with some of like the local restaurants, and just walk around and explore on our own. Then after that, we went to a museum. We don't have very many pictures shown, but it was just about kind of what was like in San Juan, which is the first place we started off in. Then we ended the day at a theater workshop. There's some pictures there. It's like a local kind of theater production where they kind of represent different things from San Juan. We have some pictures there with some students who are trying on like their costumes, the little head, and then we also have just like a group picture as well with the flag.
Good evening, board. I'm Nikki Steiner, and I'm also a junior. So for day two, we had another very packed day. You'll see that as a theme of this trip. We were very busy. We were always on our feet. But we started out the day with a tour of two UNESCO forts. One of them was El Castillo San Cristobal, and both of these were in Old San Juan again. This one was, I think it was hundreds of years old, and it was designated to defend Old San Juan against like attacks from land. And there were some beautiful views of like New San Juan, if you will. You could see, you know, the new skyscrapers and everything. And then the second fort we went to was El Moro. This fort was even older. I believe it was one of, if not the oldest, in the Caribbean. And this was designed to defend against like naval attacks. And both of these were just amazing. We had some time to just wander around on our own as little groups, and we saw some great things and learned a lot of stuff there. Then we were fortunate to have a little bit of time on the beach. You can see a little picture in there towards the right. Luckily, the rain did hold off. I know it looks kind of ominous, but it held off. And then we enjoyed some dinner, and we had a salsa lesson. We have a couple of videos up there to play, but... We got the hain of it after a little bit. This was just at the very start. We were taking it slow, but yeah, that... Yeah, I know personally, the salsa lesson was a highlight for me, but that was our day too.
Okay, I'm Molly, and I'm a senior. So on day three, we were traveling to Ponce, which is about an hour and thirty across the island. And on the way there, we stopped at this farm called Asienda AA, and it was right on the south side of El Yunque, which is one of the biggest rainforests in like the Caribbean area. And this was kind of like a reset day after some busy days, and we split into two groups. So one group did kind of this like horse, we got to see horses and like pet them, and then the other group talked about plants, and then we switched. And we just learned a lot about kind of local, like growing and agriculture. And we also got to, some people played soccer. We ate with just that amazing view, and it was a really authentic meal.
All right, so for our fourth day, we were in Ponce, and it was our first full day in Ponce. And we started out with a Ponce walking tour just around their like downtown area, and you can see the church that was over there, and then like their old fire station. Next off, kind of the biggest part of our day was visiting a local school, and we spent some time there. We met up with some students, and we split off into smaller groups, and we got to visit different classrooms. It was a K through twelve school, so we got to visit some kindergartners, a first-grade class, a fifth-grade class, and even like some seniors and juniors who were more our age. And we got to speak Spanish with them. We got to learn about what their school was like, and about how their lives were like. And in the end, we also just made new friends in Puerto Rico. A highlight was that both of our schools came together and played soccer and basketball. It was kind of impromptu, but the second everyone started playing, everyone was just gathering around and cheering for everybody. It was really fun. After that, we had a cooking class. It's kind of pictured in the bottom middle. We made mofongo, which is like a Puerto Rican cuisine where you like have smashed plantains, and you just put different things in like a bowl of it, like rice, and beans, and meat, and like salad. It was really interesting because we got to make it by ourselves with our own hands, and then we got to eat it. And then after that, we went to the Bioluminescent Bay. So basically, we took a boat, and we went out into this little bay, and when you would get in the water, the algae and the plankton, when you would move in the water, it would light up. There's kind of a picture there, but it's very hard to like depict on a camera compared to like what you see with your own eyes. So we learned a lot about like the environment there, but also we got to have a cool experience where we swam at night.
So day five was our last full day, and we spent the morning in Ponce again. We started off by visiting El Castillo, and you can see, off to the right side, you can see the view from the patio of El Castillo. This was a mansion that was built by the Seralis family in the late or the mid nineteen hundreds, and they were known as like the founders of Don Q. Rum. And so it was a very big mansion. You could tell, very ornate. But it's actually owned by the city of Ponce now, and they sold it at a very low price to the city, so it's now a museum. And that was very, very neat to see just the history of the city, and you kind of got a glimpse at like the history and the geography of Ponce itself. And then we were representing with the SAS compass there, out in front of El Castillo. And then we toured a coffee plantation up, it wasn't quite on top of, but it was about halfway up the tallest height in Puerto Rico, Cerro de Punta. That was called Café de Cerro, and that was very neat. We actually got to walk around and just tour the coffee plantation itself, and we were showing a presentation on, you know, the coffee that they grow there. And that was very neat. We got to see just like the geography, and I didn't know a whole lot about coffee, and like where it was grown, where it could be grown with different climates across the world. And then we ended our day by heading back to San Juan. We caught a picture of the rainbow on our way back, right when we were outside, but yeah, that's about it. That's our last "whiff." That was a phrase that was taught to us. It's just like a sign of like happiness and...
Well, thank you very much for sharing. I neglected to tell you that since this is an extended public comment, we won't be drilling you with questions, although some of us had practiced three or four questions in Spanish for you, but we'll have to do it the next, nope, the next time. I think, yeah, yeah, you're welcome. But thank you very much for taking the flag abroad with you, and we always appreciate seeing it pop up in the great best places. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Well done. Stacy Rompsa? Did I what? Sorry, it was eight minutes, but that was eight minutes. But we're gonna go for, it's not gonna be fifteen minutes long, is it?
Oh, no. Less than five.
Oh, no, I did not. But I warned the next people.
Well, good evening. Thank you for letting me address the board. I have to say on a personal note, I was very fortunate enough to be a chaperone with that group, and it truly was a very immersive experience, and I feel very fortunate that I was able to go. I have to brag on them because all those kids, they were so polite, and a lot of our tour guides complimented them, said they were some of the best groups that they had had. So that says a lot for our Saline students, so anyway, yay. So I'm gonna, I'm speaking on behalf of the foundation as executive director. Just wanted to give a quick update on Blue Jeans and Bling. As most everyone knows, the event was canceled due to the power outage at the Kensington Hotel. So it was very unfortunate, but they were, they were good to work with, gave us all of our money back, there were no issues. And I have to brag on the committee that was led by Estrella Lilly. The committee did an amazing job. I can't say enough wonderful things. It was, you know, it was late in the day, or later, I guess I should say, early afternoon when we officially canceled because we were waiting on word from the Kensington. And they all came together super fast. They were able to turn things over quickly. We were able to move our online, our live auction online, and I think we ended up making about fifteen thousand from the live auction. Obviously, that was supposed to be a person. So for what became a non-event, we ended up raising sixty thousand dollars in net profits. So I'm very happy with that. And we're telling everyone to be sure and keep your Blue Jeans and Bling outfits because we're gonna do it again next year. So, yep, we'll keep you posted on that. Just another quick update regarding grants. We are in our grant submission window right now, and teachers and staff, admin, the window is open for submission until this coming Friday. And then upon returning from spring break on that Monday, the third, the grants committee will review it, review all the grants. Right now, we have eleven grants submitted, and then it will go for the trustee vote on Tuesday, April the eleventh, and we have around fifty thousand dollars in funds to use for the remainder of this school year. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on Susie Traber and Monique Hunter. We discussed earlier that they'd have, it's okay, about ten minutes you would take or so.
Hi, I'm Monique Hunter. I'm a resident of Saline, and I've had three children go through the Saline School District. I want to thank you for having us. We're here tonight to talk about the Secure Storage Resolution for Firearms, as well as the Be Smart program. As you know, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens, which is a CDC statistic, and keeping children safe is really a community effort, which takes parents, teachers, community leaders, doctors, nurses, police, and more. The Be Smart program promotes responsible gun ownership to reduce childhood deaths. It's a twenty to thirty-minute, non-political presentation for adults who are gun owners, as well as those who are non-gun owners. And SMART is an acronym, so S stands for Secure, Secure Guns in Your Home and Your Vehicle. Firearms should be unloaded, locked with the ammunition stored separately, and children should not have any access to however you store it, whether it's with a lock or anything like that. M stands for Model Responsible Behavior Around Guns, and that should become a normal part of safety conversations with your child. Like if you see a gun, don't touch it, tell an adult. But another part of that is the A, ask about unsecured guns in other homes. And that should really be as simple as asking about allergens in homes. Like if your child has a food allergy, you would ask about pets, about foods. If they're allergic to pets, you'd ask about pets, swimming pools in their home. R stands for Recognize the Roles of Guns in Suicide. Forty percent of child gun deaths are suicide, and in two out of three suicide cases where a youth used a family member's gun, the gun was unlocked. And that's from the U of M Firearms Injury Prevention Center. Be Smart also has resources for mental health, links to the National Suicide Prevention Line, the nine-eight-eight Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, and a texting option. They also talk about signs to look out for when you're concerned a loved one may be suicidal. They talk about those signs, and there's information about contacting your pediatrician, family doctor, and mental health specialist. And T is Tell Your Peers About Be Smart. The overwhelming majority of firearms used in school gun violence incidents are obtained from the shooter's home or from the home of relatives. That's a U of M statistic. When guns are not properly stored, a child could find it and injure themselves or others, or it could be stolen, especially from a vehicle, and used to commit a crime. And finally, the last one I had is that the American Academy of Pediatrics states that the absence of guns from homes is the most reliable and effective measure to prevent suicide, homicide, and unintentional firearm-related injuries. But if there are guns in the home, they also recommend storing guns securely, which is locked and unloaded. And the information for Be Smart can be found at besmartforkids.org. And I'll turn over to Susan.
Hi, I'm Susie Treber. I'm a Saline resident. I have five daughters who graduated from Saline schools, and I have one who's a teacher at Harvest. So I am here to talk again about the resolution and support of gun safety and secure gun storage. And we presented a pretty long presentation in the fall to the school board, so I'm not going to go over all the details of it again, but I will make sure that the new members get a copy of that really soon, like tomorrow. But I do want to summarize the key points of the resolution. In summary, a resolution is a commitment by the school board to annually inform the parents and staff of what safely storing a firearm entails, and it would require a signature or checkmark from parents that they have reviewed the recommendations. And the specifics are that a gun is to be stored, locked, and unloaded, and separate from ammunition, and that minors have no access to opening locked mechanisms. Secondly, the resolution would specify that the school board would continue to provide education to parents and staff about other safe practices in collaboration with law enforcement, medical agencies, and nonprofit groups such as ourselves. And the way, some of the ways that this continuing, continued education could be done would be through like the Be Smart presentations that Monique was referring to, providing the Be Smart link on the school websites, sending home Be Smart articles, which are full of really great information about how to handle gun safety. So why we feel this resolution is really important, or perhaps you want to call it a policy, however we get the message out to parents is what's most important. But the reason we feel it's important to do something where we are reaching all the parents is because it will just be that much more effective if we do it that way. We are so, so grateful for the board considering, allowing us to do the Be Smart presentations, but we know that that won't reach all the parents. The more parents we can reach about this message, the more effective it will be. And as Monique said, most guns that are used in school shootings were unsecured guns. Same with most guns that are used in suicides where the guns were obtained from home, the guns were not safely secured. We also feel like Saline can be an example for other surrounding schools. We, when we gave this presentation in the fall, there were ten school districts that have currently passed a school safety resolution, but now it's up to sixteen. We know that volunteers are going to soon be talking to Chelsea, Dexter, and Ipsilani schools about passing a resolution, so we want to be on board with that. We know that a secure storage resolution can't stop every potential shooting, just like we know that a law can't stop every crime, but we should still be actively trying to do things that can stop a tragedy from happening, and this is a low-cost way to do that. We know that there are many other areas that need addressing, like more mental health services, and we support those as well. Finally, Monique was passing around something to you that is new, that we did not present in the fall, but it's a new idea that came to me, and that is if we're working so hard to want to spread this message of safe gun storage to all adults, why do we not include middle school and high school students? So I came up with this idea of having some kind of an agreement that they could potentially sign, and it has all kinds of ideas on there of ways that they could agree to that promote safe gun practices. My feeling is that if we're honest with ourselves, our students aren't probably feeling very safe after what happened at MSU and Oxford, and it's, you know, it's a pretty daily occurrence. And I feel like it would be a really meaningful way to include them and empower them, and helping to come up with solutions to help protect them, the school. Finally, I just wanted to say that, you know, first and foremost, we are most interested in getting some sort of school resolution, or policy, or whatever you want to call it, information out to the parents about what secure storage is. That is first and foremost our priority. But secondly, we do feel like including the students in some form of an agreement would be beneficial, but we're gonna understand if you want to address that later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susie and Monique. I appreciate it. Thank you. We'll be in touch. Under the section of the agenda called Response to Public Comment, I do want to take a point of privilege and note that we have a guest in the audience, Mike Tyndell, a board representative, a board trustee from Manchester, who he's doing the grand tour of other boards around the county, just to see how they do their business. But thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. At this point, I'd like to seek approval of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the agenda, or the order of items can be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed or revised.
So moved. Stevan?
Thank you.
Support, Eastep.
Thank you. Any discussion, comment? No? All in favor of approving the agenda as printed? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion is, the agenda is approved. We have a student showcase tonight. Thank you to our student representative for finding this remarkable group of people. Could I please ask the connect, sorry, the Builders Club, connecting club is pretty close.
Hello, good evening. We're happy to be here. I'm Kirsten Zemitis. I'm a seventh-grade social studies teacher at the middle school.
I'm Laura Odom, also a seventh-grade social studies teacher at the middle school, and we are co-advisors of Builders Club.
Can you mind going to the next slide? Thank you. So just a little bit of background about our club. We have been active in the middle school for five years now, and our Builders Club is a division of the larger Kiwanis Club, whose mission is to serve children all around the country and world. Our members often will go from our middle school club and continue to work with the high school version, which is the key club, and we hear wonderful things about the connection between being able to start in middle school and then continuing their work serving communities in high school.
And our kids really dedicate themselves, like they join this club knowing that they want to service both their like local communities, we're talking school, Saline, but also global communities as well, in a variety of ways. We have two members who are here to speak about their experiences. So we have M first, and then Peyton next, and then we also have another member joining us as well.
Good evening, Saline Board of Education members, Dr. Lotch, and Saline community. My name is M, and I'm here to represent the SMS Builders Club. There are a lot of things I like about Builders Club. One of my favorite things, probably that we have lots of different people, grades, races, genders, and people with different interests in Builders Club. But when it comes down to it, we're all really nice people who just want to help our community and our world. Builders Club participates in many events and does lots of fun crafts and activities for our community during meetings. We make holiday cards for the senior center. We've decorated posters with encouraging messages and hung them around the middle school. We just recently made winter care kits to keep in our cars for people, I can't see, for people that may not have had a home or shelter. These kits included food, hats, gloves, socks, deodorant, toothbrush, toothpaste, et cetera. We also made cat toys to donate to the Humane Society, and I think at our next meeting, we are going over to the senior center and are going to spruce up their patio and make it look all nice after all the crazy weather we've had. An event that the Builders Club just had a chance to participate in was Kids Coalition Against Hunger. And from what I heard, everyone that went had a lot of, lots of fun socializing on a weekend and knowing they're helping lots of people. Builders Club is lots of fun, and I always love whatever activities Mrs. Odom and Mrs. Zemitis have planned.
Hello, my name is Peyton. I'm an eighth grader at Saline Middle School, and I am also a member of the Builders Club. I think that the Builders Club is great because it provides an easy opportunity to volunteer and help out in the community. For me, I always wanted to be more active in helping out in the area, but I had never really had a good opportunity to do so. Builders Club gives you so many different opportunities to help others. I love that it is nice and easy to do good with our community without it being too stressful or expensive to do so. Some of my favorite projects we've done this year was making toys for the Humane Society and packaging food for Kids Against Hunger. I think that everybody, but especially people that want to do good in our area, should at least try Builders Club. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
We just have a couple of pictures of our kids in action.
Yeah, we have to take the pictures, of course, but we do have a few questions.
Sure.
Can the other member introduce themselves if they feel comfortable doing so?
I'm Julia Odom.
Okay.
I told her she didn't have to speak.
I'm like, your parent will be proud and you're, I love it.
But we, we do want to make it clear, like our club is open to sixth through eighth graders, so, and we meet year round throughout the school year. So that's one thing that makes our club a little bit special, too, is that, you know, we invite a lot of people that could also be in our group for three years.
Sorry. I just wanted to, Peyton's not going to hear it, but I appreciate her speaking before she had to go sack her. I just really like that you're modeling volunteerism and really giving back, and our students always impress me so much. I really appreciate it. You're setting a standard and faculty advisors, thank you.
We can work our way around the table. I, I don't have a lot to say about the group. I'm really fascinated to learn more, though, but I did want to say, take a few seconds out of this presentation and note your socks, Em.
Rock your socks off, world doesn't mean.
I know. We have the T-shirt here. And go ahead. And we have in the audience, we have a few, and even our superintendent, you can catch a glimpse on, oh, there he is.
I took mine off before the presentation because I didn't know.
I missed the memo, and as a consequence, I have dark blue socks, sorry. So Jen, Secretary Miller.
I was just going to say that my daughter, my oldest daughter was part of Key Club at the high school, and the opportunities that they had have carried over into the work that she's doing in college. And I know Mrs. Zemitis remembers her. She was a special teacher, and so it's really great to see you tonight. And I think that not only is it giving kids an opportunity to give back to their community and to think about, think about others and, and how their lives might be different and how they can help and support people who, who have needs that are different than their own, I think is a really great opportunity. But I also know that Mrs. Odom and Mrs. Zemitis, this is another opportunity that you take to really give back to the kids, and I know that the two of you in particular just have a heart for your students, and I, I know that about a lot of teachers in Celine, but I know that you look for the special in each kid and find unique opportunities to really showcase that, and I think this club is one of those ways that you're doing that, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, so I can't beat what you said. So, very, very, very nice. Yeah, thank you for your, your support, your commitment to these young people. Socks and shoes are fantastic. You ever want to get rid of those shoes? You've got a buyer right here. After two years, most people should know they're going to get this question from me when they visit. So what can we do to support you and to get behind your group? And do you have a pulpit for, you know, recruiting and whatever else? So how can we have your back?
I mean, I think that we already feel very supportive, supported by the board, by our administrators in the middle school. We've been lucky to be able to have this club for, this is our fifth year now. So I think that, that we feel that support, knowing that we have members who continue from, you know, sixth grade all the way to eighth grade, and then who will continue on into high school. I think just shows that, I, I hope, I don't want to speak for students, but I hope they feel that support as well. So I don't know, Mrs. Odom, if you have anything specific?
No, I think that's it, too. Like, obviously, your kind words, I think, will help promote it as well. But I think, yeah, we're, we're here to stay, hopefully.
Trustee Austin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for doing this. I think the idea of instilling volunteerism in our young kids is so important, and hopefully they'll continue this on in the Key Club. It's, that, that's an amazing program as well. And you don't want to do things out of a selfish, for selfish reasons, but when you start volunteering, the fulfillment that you get out of volunteering and doing things for others is, it's, it's life-altering. And so I think it's awesome that we can start instilling that at a young age.
Absolutely. And I think that the dedication of the students really speaks to their, that they really feel that. I mean, they come at 7:15 in the morning.
And to board meetings.
And they all come because it's a choice, because they find value or they understand that it is something that they are able to provide to others. So I think that the involvement and the dedication of our students really speaks to the value that they find and will continue, right, hopefully, on into high school and then into their adult life as well.
Well, thank you, thank you very much, and it was nice to meet you, and, oh, there's yet another one.
So first and foremost, if nothing else, student to student, it's a I think maybe that one's on? I don't know. Okay. I'll go further this way. That's better. Okay. If nothing else, student to student, it's really good to just start this kind of thing early just to help you grow as like a human being, just because I think being kind to others and just being mindful of the people around you is just a good skill to have as a person. And I think it's really cool, frankly, that you are doing this at such a young age, because when I was in seventh grade, I was not getting up at 7:15 in the morning, not for school, definitely not, meetings. So I don't, good on you for starting that early. I appreciate that behavior.
I was wondering how you decide what your initiatives will be? Is it student-led, teacher-led? Who picks? Like, is there a brainstorming session at the beginning?
Kind of a little bit of both. When we initially started our club, we leaned a little bit on Jen Denzen, who was the Key Club advisor, because she was the one who kind of requested that we start a middle school chapter. And then we asked the kids, like, what are the things that are most important to you? And so we devised a list that way, and then we also kind of take into consideration, we have middle school kids. They can't drive. And so we have to do things that are pretty much located at the school, and then also kind of weather-friendly, like what, what do we do outside, inside, and so forth?
What, probably one of my favorite things was, I think, it was either the end of last year or the beginning of this year, everyone that was in Builders Club last year kind of got like a list of everything that we had done for the year. And it was like, what was your favorite and why? And so, and those are things that I see like we do again. Like, one of our favorites was writing those encouraging posters that I mentioned and putting those all over the walls, because those are always fun to see and nice on a day when you're not feeling that great. And so then we got to Builders Club, and guess what? We made them again this year, and I, and I hope that's something like we keep doing because it's something the kids enjoy.
We're also very lucky to have a lot of great community partnerships, local partnerships. So year after year, we've worked with the local Veterans Association to make cards for veterans. We've donated candy to our police officers. We've worked with the senior center multiple times with Meals on Wheels. So really kind of reaching out to initiate those partnerships and then continuing them year after year.
I just want to say thank you, and that I'm very proud of all the students, and especially Em, who I've known since she was, since they were very small.
So since I didn't really ask a question, so how are you engaging students who maybe aren't up at 7:15? And maybe aren't part of the, the club actively, but want to have an opportunity to volunteer? Are there opportunities in like the school day or extended to other students?
Well, I feel like a lot of our, our members have friends who, like, they will talk about their projects to their friends, and so they might take their project with them. I'll use Em's example of the posters. Like, they didn't finish it, you know, before the bell rang at 7:40 or 7:45, so they take it back with them and their friends help them. When we did the, when we invited people to the Kids Coalition Against Hunger event, we said, bring your friends, bring your family. So we do what we can with that, but we do have to have a set time, each, each meeting time, just so families and members do know, like, okay, here's, they can count on that time. Everybody's always invited to help out.
But yeah, that's great that you, oop, sorry, extend those opportunities. You know, whether it's one time, hanging out with a friend and helping out, because that may benefit them when they can get involved, maybe later next year or at the high school, so, thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you very much. We have one scheduled report this evening, and I believe I'm calling on the fabulous Mr. Rex Clary. Fabulous. He has a whole crew. They're all lined up in alphabetical order, is that?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and talk about the operations department. Let's see here. Which one? Okay, here we go. Hornet Ops 2023. We support Celine Area Schools 24/7/365. Couldn't even, couldn't be more to the truth, so. Strategic goal number three, when I talk to my staff, I always try to start every meeting with this. Enhance a positive school environment that promotes student and staff well-being, satisfaction, and positive morale. And then under the compass, we'll be, we find our spot under the learning environment. What we do in operations, our bus drivers are the first to meet the students in the morning. Our food service team makes sure they have a good breakfast and a good lunch during the day. Our HVAC and custodian team makes sure they have a positive learning environment that is clean, has conditioned air, they feel safe. We want them to take pride in their building facility as well as athletic facility. And our, for our bus riders, we are the last employee to influence their day. Introductions, Rex Clary, Director of Operations. I'm a graduate of Celine Area Schools, proud graduate, 1989, and I'm starting my 10th year.
I'm Tracy Mulk here. I am the Transportation Manager, and I've been with Celine Schools for 22 years. I'm Anita Falcamp. I'm Transportation Coordinator. I've been with Celine Schools for 29 years, 19, or 19 years as a driver and the rest in the office.
My name is Cody Pickard. I'm the Facilities Manager. I've been with Celine Schools for a little over a month now, but I've been in, I've been in public education for about 15 years now.
My name's Chuck McCullough. My name's Chuck McCullough. I'm the Construction and Security Manager. I've been with the district for 30 years, and actually just past 30 years now, and I graduated in 1992 from Celine here.
I'm Larry DeAndrea. I am the Food Service Director for the school district, and this is my seventh school year.
My name's Darnell Pace, and I'm the Assistant Director of Food Service, and this is my second school year with Celine.
Okay, so buildings and grounds. So right now, we have 30, 34 staff, or when we're full staff, we have 34 staff. We take great pride in their facilities. Our seven lead custodians take great pride in their facilities, working with administrators, staff, and students to make sure they have a positive learning environment. As we staff transitions, the building lead is always there, taking care of that facility, making sure everybody's on the same page, rowing at the same pace, and rowing in the same direction. One of Celine's most valued resources for the community is our school buildings and our grounds, and we take great pride in taking care of those. Our grounds department, during the summer, we maintain approximately 150 of the 100, of the 370 acres, which includes 23 athletic fields and five playgrounds. During the snow season, we clear 35 acres of parking lots, nine miles of sidewalks, and nearly five miles of roads and entrances. In-house, we do locksmithing, irrigation management, pesticide and fertilizer application, athletic field painting and trash removal from those 23 athletic fields. We try to do as much as we can in-house. Our afternoon custodians, we have 20. So with almost 1.2 million square feet under roof, each night, our afternoon custodians clean 600, 2,000 square foot homes, each night, and on the weekends. We use our facilities 24/7. Our HVAC crew, this is a picture of Harvest Elementary. Kind of shows what the temperatures are in the building at the present time. When we finish up the high school this summer, which will be, fingers crossed, we will have 900,000 square feet of visibility just like this, where our crew can come in at 6 o'clock in the morning, see what's going on in the building, see what they need to adjust to make sure they have a positive learning environment. Our crew has done a great job during COVID with the increased air filtration, increased amount of fresh air changes. We, we have really done a, we have not seen any transmission within the buildings. Pleasant Ridge had their issue this year, but that was not a, not that kind of issue, so. Teamwork. So teamwork. With the 34 staff, people that live in the district, grew up in the district, have kids in the district or grandkids in the district, they do a great job of working together. We couldn't do graduation without the teamwork. Summer team cleaning, terrazzo stone polishing. They really say, they find a way to say yes before they say no. And that's an ism from Mr. Gilbert, but they, they want to say yes before they say no. I don't hear, we don't have enough time, we don't have enough money, I can't do that. They always try to find a way to make it work, especially if it's for the students. And emergency response, so the emergency response piece, too. Whether you have a bus that hits a building or a frozen pipe, you know, when a phone call is made, our people respond. They really care about the district and really do a great job of doing, of taking care of that kind of stuff and being responsive. And with a little bit about food service.
Some of our achievements are, on the daily, we serve about 1,500 lunches a day. On Tuesdays, especially at the high school, we do our presentation. Me and Mr. Larry here, we go out and we do stir fry and pasta for the kids. It's made to order, so they can start a line, come in, put all their vegetables and everything they want, and then we fry it up for them. We've got a ton of pictures. I'm on so many kids' Snapchat because of it. But it's a great time with the, the older kids, the high school kids. We also go to the elementary schools. St. Patty's Day, I was dressed up. And I went to the, to the schools and we passed out candy and took pictures with the kids. They love it. We've made over $37,000 in concessions. We are really busy with concessions. I do everything we can to make sure it goes well. So, and if anybody needs any help, I'm always there to help. What else we got here? A lot of breakfast, and that's kind of hard to do, honestly. Breakfast is the most important part of the day, and it's kind of hard to get little kids to eat anything, you know, besides sugar. So to give them healthy choices and have something for them, and they can pick from a lot of different varieties, and they love it. So we try to do our best to make sure we meet all the standards.
The $37,000 is what was raised that goes back to the student clubs. So, because for every concession event, 75% of the profit goes back to the in-house student club. Some of our challenges, we obviously have increased food costs. Food costs went up 10% on average last year. This year, they're supposed to slow, but it'll still be probably 7% to 8%. It's always a challenge, especially in elementary schools, to get students to try new things. And we have aging equipment at several of our schools. And then staffing has been an issue for this year. We have currently 27 staff members. We should have 35. So we're just continuing to try to find new employees. If anyone is looking, we have great three-hour positions available.
Okay. In transportation, our school buses transport 3,200 students each day and travel more than 1,750 miles. We have 23 bus routes with only 17 route drivers. We have 23 bus routes with only 17 route drivers. So when you do the math, how do we provide uninterrupted bus service with that few of drivers? That would be our sub-drivers. We have seven substitutes, and most of them drive every single school day. In addition to our amazing substitute drivers, we also have 10 quote-unquote "other" staff within the operations department that are properly licensed to drive a school bus. These individuals are myself, Rex, Anita, Cody, Chuck, who you met tonight, both of our bus mechanics, and three of our grounds crew. We've taken an outside-the-box approach to combine bus driving with other positions within our department in an effort to attract and retrain, retain bus drivers and monitors. Our number one challenge in the operations department currently is staffing. Though we have great people, we simply don't have enough to provide the extras. Extras like athletic trips and field trips that may go, be scheduled to go out before 9:00 AM or after 2:00 PM, we can't really say yes right now. Because we're all hands on deck for our bus routes. Another staffing, or another challenge that we are facing is increased costs. New buses, repair parts, and especially fuel have really increased for us in the past couple of years. Next, I'm going to talk about the operations department culture. We strive to create a very positive culture. In transportation, we have Fun Food Friday potluck every month. We decorated a school bus and walked along beside it in Celine's holiday parade. We made training fun with our school bus rodeo. And most recently, we celebrated Love the Bus Month in February with hundreds of colored pages and messages from elementary students to their bus drivers. We plastered the lounge with them, and they were very much enjoyed. In the Building and Grounds Department, we used bowling as a team building exercise at Station 300. We hosted a summer picnic with training. We partnered with the high school school store, The Edge, to provide our uniforms. And next week, we will be hosting at the high school an equipment show that our lead custodians can attend and learn more about the latest innovations in the industry. When the city put on the fireworks displays, we realized that the view from the bus garage and ground shop was going to be spectacular. So we opened it up to our staff and their families to come and enjoy the show.
So, I guess, how do we maintain our facilities? And what does that number mean? So, that is the budget for Buildings and Grounds, $5,384,641. This is a ranking put out for the Michigan Department of Education. This was added this morning, so it wasn't in your, over the weekend. So out of 822 school districts, Celine area schools ranks 59th in instructional support in the classroom. We keep the money in the classroom. In administration report, ranking, we're at 752. Again, we put the money in the classroom, not in the administration. And the last is just operations and maintenance. We're at 525, $1,093 per pupil spending out of 822 districts. So we're not quite in the bottom third, but we're close. And in total support in Whitmore Lake, or no, I'm sorry, Whitmore Lake, Washtenaw County, you can see where we rank. We're, we spend the least amount per pupil for operations and maintenance in the county compared to our other peer districts in and around us. So how do we do that? Our community has supported us over the years. With the sinking fund, we're allowed to make repairs for HVAC equipment, grounds equipment, not necessarily grounds equipment, but you can't buy equipment. LED lights, flooring, roofing. And the Safe Warm and Dry bond has set us up for success in this Bond 22 campaign to build new spaces. And the Safe Warm and Dry, we did a great job of creating vestibules, access controls. I think we did a really good job of, you know, identifying our security needs and taking care of those. And now we can build new spaces, and we can design them for the new spaces and the steam, and the athletics, and everything in between. So I think really it's set us up for success, the Safe Warm and Dry, and the sinking fund that our community has supported us in that. And finally, come join our team, paraprofessionals, food service, bus drivers, and maintenance. Celine area schools is currently accepting applications because that is our biggest challenge. We, we want to do a better job. I think we give really good service right now, but we could give great customer service if we had more staff. Cause we've got some really great people. We just need more of them. Questions?
First, I want to say thank you. I'm just so impressed by the pride that I see both on your shirts but in your voices. And I just wanted to communicate that when I'm in the buildings a lot for athletics or other, other events and, and clubs and things like that, and, and because of my kids. We have a lot of guests, right? We have a lot of guests from outside school districts. We have a lot of guests, aunts and grandparents and guardians all coming to support their kids. And I consistently hear how nice our grounds are, how beautiful our buildings are, and I think the pride shows through that way as well. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, and we've had some really-
And we're hiring.
And we've had some really great people, and we've had some great people retire recently in their knowledge, but yet their work ethic and their mentorship and their leadership over the years, that next group has stepped up and really filled that void for us.
I mean, that's, that's a question I would have, and I heard 29 years, I heard 39, like fantastic, heard a month, welcome. But like succession planning, not that any of you need to retire anytime soon, but I mean, this is something to think about, right? Because if you have staffing concerns now and you're not filling all the vacancies, and you have a highly expert team that have long tenure, how, how are we, how are we kind of looking at that?
We are attracting hopefully new talent every day, cause recruiting talent is a 24/7/365. Every week, Tracy and I try to do something to attract new talent, to attract an interview, talk to the community, whether it's Facebook, whether it's Twitter, whether it's Indeed. We do our best to try to attack, attract that and kind of combine jobs. We've got food service that drives school buses. We have people in grounds that drive school buses that are school bus drivers first, cut grass or plow snow second. We try to, you know, to offer them opportunities, to offer them benefits. We do so many things at bus monitor and working as a custodian. So we've combined several jobs because we have the ability, in our department, it's unique, I think, not that other districts don't do this, but we, we work with food service. We work with technology. Chuck McCullough, you know, he's got 30 years, and he could, we could retire, but Chuck's going to help us, and he's going to help us integrate security into the new systems and the new buildings. And hopefully attract that next person that can kind of fill the knowledge that he has, so.
So you all have, from what I'm seeing, an amazing culture is, is the term that you use. And obviously a need for that, right? For building up your staff and making it feel like, you know, a family. And so I'm, you know, I guess a question about burnout, right? But it sounds like, you know, that, that's something that you all are focusing on and is an important value for you. So that's awesome. Keep that up. And I'm sure there's, you know, some groups within the district, like the PTA, I know have chipped in in the past to, you know, celebrate you all, and I think that's great. So, are there, so I know like, so I guess my question is, how much volunteer support do you have? Or are you able to accept, and does that, you know, communicated to, to the schools and everything?
Well, I would say that our PTOs and PTAs really support our custodians in the buildings. And the PTO and the PTAs at the middle school, I believe, have brought us breakfast for our, our bus drivers before too.
We had a Girl Scout troop that adopted us last year as a department, and were able to get enough, I'm not sure how they earned them, but by their sales, they were enough boxes to give every bus driver a box of cookies. We had a parent that brought Punschkes last year on Punschke Day for all of our drivers. We really do feel like the community supports us. Maybe we could get that message out better. They like donuts, they like treats. And any morning is a good morning. We're, we're kind of unique in that everybody pretty much gets back to that bus lounge around the same time, around that nine o'clock time, and, and it's a great time to meet, and yeah.
So, I don't know if an HR video has been created, but I think that would be amazing with, you know, I, I know that's something you all have pro- like, you know, have been proud of and elevated, right? That it's a great place to, to work for, and so I don't know if that's something that, you know, this team over here has thought about, but kind of capturing that, you know, energy and putting it out there to come work for us? Okay, it's out there, so let's spread it. And also, board members are not able to work for the district, but they are able to volunteer. So, you know, if you need a couple of us trained on some buses.
Vice Pres- sorry, Secretary Miller.
So a couple of things. The first thing that, that came to mind was just seeing Tracy and Anita, and then seeing the picture with Susan and Carrie. Like, these are all people that in some way had a direct impact on my kids when they were going through school, so thank you. I knew that I could always call Tracy or Anita, like with some bus, like, oh, this is happening, and they would respond. And Sue's, Susan and Carrie became like family, so, and those were our afternoon custodians. So I mean, our daytime custodians too, but just when I saw their pictures, it just reminded me, and then when I saw the two of you there too. So thank you for the, for the impact that you have on our kids. Now, I do have a bone to pick with our, with our food service though, because my son drains his food account more than he should. And I think it's because of the pasta and the stir fry, so, so you're doing something good, because at home, he wants McDonald's and pizza and all that. So whatever you're giving him at school, I know that it's, it's got some veggies and some protein in it, so. Yeah, I swear, I will say though, that that system that you have that pops up and reminds me that he's got eight dollars left in the account has been a savior. Because I know that if I had to keep track of it, I would, I would not always know when he's had a big lunch, so, so thank you. I think that that's fabulous, that you guys are doing some things like that to really connect with the students, and I know he is enjoying it, so. The other thing that I was thinking of, speaking of my son who's a junior, he's in the marketing program. So I love that you partnered with The Edge to, to think about supporting those students with, with your uniforms. But finally, I just was thinking, when you were talking about the culture of the department, and the word that came to mind, especially thinking about Chuck and, and all of his years, was legacy. And I think that something that is unique in Celine, and I know, cause I've worked in other places, and I work in another place now, is the commitment that you all have to, to this district and to the students in particular. And I, I think that our commitment, our commitment as a district to your department, to keep you a part of our school district and to not have privatized service is a priority for me. I think that it makes a big difference. It makes a big difference in morale. It makes a big difference in the product and the, and the way that services are delivered. So when we walk into a school, your pride is evident. We see it in the care of the buildings, the maintenance, the ma- the way that the buildings look brand new, even when they're 20 years old. The, the, this extra care that you take with the kids on the bus, all of that is, is noted and appreciated. And I just wanted to let you know that that is a priority for me, and I see the difference that it makes in our kids' lives every day. So thank you to your commitment and, and for your legacy to our students.
Wow, I echo you once again. Yeah, 6:00 AM to midnight, right? You're often, like you said, the first person to see our students and our staff in the morning, and you're oftentimes the last person to see them at night, so. All of you are very important, and I want you to know how much I appreciate you. Ms. Mulcair, you're in the room, so I'm especially going to point out, I appreciate some of the ingenuity that you've had with regards to finance and some of the creativity you've had. For example, I want to recall, like, don't you, didn't you do some kind of like collaborative team consortium thing that saved us like $1.9 million or some number for buying buses? And then you got a grant through the MDE, I think, for some kind of training you did? Anyway, I, I, a shout out to you. You want to correct me? I, I just-
I did help to secure a grant for new bus purchase, and we do try to do some collaborative training with other districts, but it wasn't as high of a figure as you.
It's not as high as I said? Okay. Well, I, I still thank you for being here, cause I, I know that writing those grants and applying and going through those processes and making the phone calls and all of those things don't just happen. So, so thank you to you, thank you to teammates who help with those things, I really do. Thank you very much. Rex, you have an incredible team, and I'm excited for your future, right? I'm excited about the bond. I'm excited about the things that we're going to be able to do. I'm excited about how we're going to be able to go out into our communities and hopefully be able to, to sell our product, that we're going to be a great employer, and we're going to be a stable employer and a, you know, and somewhere you're going to enjoy to work. And anyway, so that's that. Now, I am going to make you work for one minute here, Rex. Regarding the bus in the school, so first of all, I want to say I'm glad that the individual is okay. Can you give us an update on, on that building? Can you give us an update on, you know, what we've identified as repairs and restorations, timeline, and maybe some cost stuff? Cause the finance guy likes that too.
So the cost stuff is minimal. It's a $5,000 deductible for the building and the bus, so just one-time $5,000 charge for our insurance for the deductible. We have received payment for the bus. It was not for a brand-new bus, but it was for a partially-used bus. Bus 71 was 2019, 18? 2019. So it was three years old, four years old. We had to negotiate, but we did get it, we got it to up the, up the dollar amount. The building itself was cleared by the structural engineer. I got a call the next day from the state inspector saying, you will, how did you open the building, one? And so I had to go through that process of, we called the structural engineer, we got with our architect, we got the building certified. And then, two, he said, you will need to go through plan review before you can finish the repairs to that building. They would not just let me go straight to construction. So it is at plan review right now. Our restoration company, they are a construction company. Yeah, they're, they are a construction company. We're working through that. It is delayed a little bit, but the equipment has been ordered, the HVAC equipment, the windows, the procuring of materials, the brick. So it matches the correct window, the correct paint, you know, all that stuff is being procured as we speak. HVAC equipment is about 12 weeks. That was ordered back in March, not March, yes, March, early March. So we'll have that, cause we were debating on how we were going to attack it, and which way we were going to go, but everything's moving forward in that regards. Materials inside, we have ordered some materials. Anything the teacher needs now has been ordered, and they have that at their, at their disposal to use for teaching. Anything that's long, anything long-term will come in the summer, and they'll be ready in the fall. My goal will be to have that classroom back together by August 1st. July 1st would be great, but August 1st would be the goal, and that's kind of what I've stressed with the contractor as well, so.
Thank you, and thank you to you for driving a bus and for, for being so committed, and you're, we're going to hear earlier or later, to being so committed to the purchasing of property and answering our questions. Thank you, Rex.
Takes the whole team.
I know it does.
I ju- I want to thank all the staff in, in your department. You're really the unsung heroes of this district, because you're the lifeblood. I mean, you're keeping everything moving. The interesting, couple of interesting things is, you know, the 10, Bulletin 1014, and how you showed the Washtenaw County, and, you know, we spend the least amount. Ironically, when we have our audit, we show that, that, just like the Bulletin 1014 showed, in Washtenaw County, we spend the mo- put the most money back into our classroom per pupil. And so that, so that's interesting, and you guys, a lot of your numbers, you don't have a choice. When fuel goes up, it goes up. Like, I know for my company, it over-doubled last year. I don't know what your guys' number did, and I don't drive 1,700 miles a day either, so that's pretty crazy. Another thing I want to shout out to our community for supporting the Warm Safe and Dry Bond, because I think it was probably 2,000- Another in, uh, thing I wanna shout out to our community for supporting the Warm, Safe and Dry Bond, because, uh, I think it was probably 2014, 15, sitting here in Transportation kinda gave a, um, uh, an update. We had the oldest bus fleet, I think, in Michigan at that time, driving 1,700 miles a day, it's, it's, so it's, it's really impressive, at least now you don't have that obstacle, you just have the staffing obstacles and all the other obstacles that you face, so, um, I think you need to get a Blackstone in the bus garage and bring down the stir fry people and stir fry, and that, that would definitely help with morale, that would be awesome. I might join ya, um, that'd be great, so, thank you.
Representative have something to add?
Uh, I can attest that the stir fry is quite good. We also had omelets once, and that, that was a fun day for me. That was a, that was a good day, so, always nice to see them.
Oh, uh, Trustee Gold.
Uh, I keep trying to think of what I wanted to say, and then everyone has mentioned things, from the time that I had to call to find out, like, which bu- bus route is it again? I didn't get my postcard, or walking into the buildings and how, like, lovely everything looks, and when we have family visit, people say the same, to the fact that, like, the bus drivers remember my kids' names, to the fact that, like, I have kids with food allergies and food services, that's always been really helpful, and as a pediatrician, I'm shouting out getting kids to eat their veggies, well done. Not always easy, so I know I'm being a little repetitive, but I just, uh, couldn't, uh, let the opportunity pass to not say thank you, really, for, um, everything you do to keep these buildings safe and healthy and the kids happy and really seem to be enjoying your work, which isn't always easy, and I think it's really kinda unique when people obviously will just, like, pick up what needs to be done and get it done, even if it doesn't fall into, you know, a real traditional role, and I think that's, that's really your role models for our students that way, so thank you.
So, just to wrap up, I've got a really, I've got two short things, one's a little serious and one's a pretty light, and you might have some fun with it. Um, as a, as a former special education teacher, I have seen in my own districts and in this district that when a, a student is coming onto a bus with an issue early in the morning, you guys are the first responders, and I know you call ahead and let the, let the principals know, uh, that there might be a potential issue, and this is, this is a wonderful thing, so we count on you more than just keeping the kids safe on the road. You help change what could be a really, really awful day for one student into something that's not as horrible, and thank you so much for that. The other side is, so what creative strategies are you employing to, to bring more staff in? Uh, I think you might have some pretty good ideas.
I can speak for the Transportation Department at least. Um, we use, of course, Indeed, we use social media, we've got the bus banners, which you'll be seeing out again soon. Uh, but something we're excited about is that we are working with our HR department to put together a summer driving academy. We're going to have two sessions, hopefully, if we get enough interest, and our goal is to get, uh, current SAS staff licensed to drive a school bus, as well as use that, that time in the academy to train new employees this summer. So, the goal would be to have everyone licensed properly to drive a bus by the, uh, start of the school year.
Board retreat, Michael.
You know, I'm thinking about it, I, I, I think that you, don't you have little, like, like obstacle courses that board members could maybe try?
We do, we had the School Bus Rodeo, which, um, we may be seeing come around again soon, and it does, it has lots of obstacles, and, if you're on school property, we might be able to, to let you try it.
Well, I thank you, I very much appreciate it.
Oh, what, oh, oh, sorry. My, my brain just went to, Mr. Tyndall's here. Would we be interested also in, like, partnerships with Washtenaw, like, we have consortium friends, and would that help us to, to do that in concert together? I, I'm just throwing that out there as an idea.
You mean the training?
Yeah, like, as a summer institute, and we could be the home of-
This is our first go-round, so depending on, on how successful we are, um, and I'm hoping that we are, and depending on our interest, yeah, that's a potential.
Okay.
I guess one other thing real quick, so, speaking of bus driver, is it a Class B with air brake? What, what is the endorsement?
Yep, it's a Class B CDL license, you need to have, uh, no air brake restriction. Uh, we do have air brake buses, so you can't be restricted from driving with air brakes. Um, you also need a P passenger endorsement and an S school bus endorsement.
Okay, so they recently changed the CDL laws that require, like, so how are, I mean, it gets expensive now to go to schools to get your CDL. How, how does that work all with?
So, it's the ELDT training, is that what you're, you're talking about?
Yeah, 'cause like, for like, my drivers now, it used to be before, I think it was before December, they could, uh, be December la- this year, or last year, 2022. You didn't have to go through a class, now you have to go through a whole class.
So, we're lucky that the state of Michigan, um, school bus transportation has a lot of support through MAPT, uh, Michigan Association for People Transportation, and all of the local, like, RWISD, but also Wayne Risa has taken the lead on that classroom piece, and it's online. So, it's a four-to-six-hour online course that is free of charge to our districts to put people through the ELDT requirements that you're talking about. Um, they're really not different from what we're doing, it's just a lot more documentation, a lot more sharing of information with the federal, um, government before we can put them through that road test.
Well, oh. So, the Michigan Association, Michigan Association of People Transportation, um, is made up of 14 regions?
No, it's twenty-some.
Twenty-some, and just to say that Tracy is the region rep for four, for rep number 12, and that includes Monroe, Washtenaw, and Livingston County. And so she arranges meetings every month for those transportation directors who have time, who aren't driving school buses, to get together, to collaborate. Um, she'll be attending the, um, MAPT conference in June, at the end of June, and then she's also won a scholarship to go to the, um, Stan Expo con- uh, conference out in Nevada. So, good work. Always learn.
Well, thank you, thank you so much again for your presentation, your wonderful, um, operations presentation. Thank you. See you next year.
And thank you, thank you to the members who aren't here, everyone behind the scenes.
Don't go too far, Rex. We have-
We do have a one-substitute driver that's here, that, Mr. Frank Carey.
Uh, we have three action items this evening. Uh, the first, I'd like to recommend a motion to approve the purchase of up to, to, yeah, don't go too far.
I'm asking for the things now.
We have a bond update.
We wondered about that.
Sorry about that. Um, so, 2022 SAS bond update. Um, currently, we have roughly $45 million of projects that we're working on, um, between the playgrounds, the operation center, the weight room, uh, Steam Center and Liberty Complex. Um, we've had several programming meetings, um, with, including students, community and feedback, uh, the operation center, so I'll update that one now. Uh, we have an action item tonight, to buy a piece of property. Um, and this is kinda the hinge pinch that will vault us into the next phase. Once we establish that we have a piece of property and we can start designing that piece of property, um, that'll kinda put everything in motion as far as a timeframe for the middle school, the Steam Center, the, uh, senior center, as well as the Liberty Sports Complex, Liberty Middle School Athletic Facility there. So, hopefully with that acquisition tonight, and we finish that up next week with signatures, um, we'll be in great shape to, to kinda have a schedule and start getting that momentum to move forward. Um, our weight room is in schematic design, which means it's, the footprint is there, we're putting cost numbers to it to see if we're still in budget. We still have work to do, um, but we've had several programming, two several, two programming meetings, we got a third one set up. Um, again, student, staff, community, um, everything's moving in the right direction on that project. Elementary playgrounds and Steam Center?
Can you go back? No, well, maybe. Are you holding the clicker? Yeah. Similarly, with elementary playgrounds and the Steam Center, we've been hosting, he's very tall, um, we've been hosting our design committee meetings and been gathering feedback. Our playgrounds have had two design committee meetings, and boy, is that exciting, when you get some chart paper out, some kids, some parents, some, um, staff members and administrators to plan their playgrounds, how fun is that? So, at our last one, um, we brought, or the design company brought in some, um, schematics in terms of how, based off of the first iteration of ideas and brainstorming, and allowed the design groups by building to go back and add their edits and prioritize some things, um, and that is where we currently are at with that. Um, we have two students, a fifth grader and a second grader, who are participating on that alongside of their family members too, um, in that group. For Steam, we've had three design committee meetings, and we've been able to gather a lot of different ideas, um, from a variety of different stakeholders. We've also, as a part of that, integrated, um, some visioning work, so K-12, what is Celine's vision for Steam? So that we can create a more cohesive, um, programming approach for both our internal academic programming as connected to our external extracurriculars and clubs and organizations, because we have an amazing Steam base here in Celine, and we're doing great, great things, and we want all of those pieces to be talking together in order to do the best things for our students, as well as to create equitable access. So, we spent some time designing our vision, um, as well as identifying characteristics of what Steam spaces look like, sound like, and feel like in our district from K through 12, and then we narrowed down to the high school, um, Steam Center, and we're currently in process with that. We are actually going to the high school this Thursday for lunch, and we're going to be in all three lunches to get feedback from the students and the staff, um, regarding what their thoughts are on how this space could be used across the school day, as well as outside of the school day as well. And because of the size of this building and the potential impact it has, it felt very important to continue getting feedback, even outside of our smaller committee group. So, that's where we are with those two groups.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Karen. Um, I just wanna give a, a quick plug for Rex. Um, everything that you just saw he is doing day-to-day, and then on top of that, you know, being short-staffed, and then throw in $180 million bond that he's gotta manage, um, so he does a phenomenal job. Um, I do think that the way that we've organized it so that each of us is kind of overseeing one of these big five projects or two, um, in some cases, has really, um, allowed us to have our fingers in things that we're passionate about, but then come together as a team to talk about big picture and how these projects work together, um, but how we're utilizing our own steering committees to kinda build the best facilities we can, um, for our students and staff. So, the Liberty Sports Complex is, again, it is probably ahead of schedule, um, where it needs to be. We have a great committee of stakeholders from athletics, activities, community members, city members, board members, uh, that have, that have met two times. Our third meeting is tomorrow, and we're to the point where the, the master blueprint is pretty much done in terms of um, big, big time thinking and where those facilities will go, will go and what they look like, and the next, the next piece will be the schematic where we start to make decisions based on dollars, so they will apply kinda what they believe the budget will be, and then we will be able to work with the group to decide, well, if we have to give up something here, what can we get here, and, and start to make those, those small decisions as we look forward to that complex. Um, we also are meeting with a group of students on Friday. Principal Chekowitz at the middle school is assembling a group of middle school student athletes who will get to see the latest renderings and give all of their feedback, so we're excited about that, uh, plus pizza, so.
The high school does not have pizza. I'm gonna go on the record.
Any questions on that piece?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for including student voice in all of that.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, by April, May, we'll have drawings, so. To share, we do have drawings, but we're just not gonna share them at this time.
Thank you very much for that, those updates, I really appreciate them. Um, so, oh, unless there's anything pressing? I've got nothing for you. We have three action items this evening, so I'd like to recommend a motion to approve the purchase of up to two plow grounds vehicles for up to $50,000 to Bron and Helmer Auction Service. These vehicles will be purchased from the University of Michigan Vehicle and Equipment Auction. This purchase will be made from the Capital Projects Fund. Do we have someone to make the motion?
So moved.
Is that Tim?
Support Miller.
Support Miller, thank you very much. Any, um, this is your chance to tell us.
If, uh, if, we'll be replacing a 2001 and a 2004 or '03, um, truck, uh, that been a, that's been a plow truck, probably for over 10 years, I'm sure we bought that truck used, if I looked back on the history. Um, if we are successful, this will be the fourth and fifth truck we'll buy from this auction. Um, the other three vehicles have proven to be excellent values. Um, we usually buy those in person, not online, but, uh, different way to do business these days, so. These values, the truck, the blue, we're gonna go up to the blue book value, uh, we do have a buyer's premium, um, as of right now, we're half, we're less than half of what I've been asking for, and the, the auction is for two and a half more days, so Thursday night, so, is that two nights? Yeah.
Fantastic.
So that's where we're at.
Any quick questions for?
I've bought stuff from that auction as well, and it, it really does prove to be good value.
So, we're approving up to 50,000, but you're gonna save us a crap load of money?
Totally, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In case we go over the bid threshold, because you need to approve it, so.
Are we gonna have to define that term? Thank you. No, uh, so, um, we can put this to a vote at this point. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And hearing no opposition, we're getting ourselves some vehicles. Uh, the next motion I'd like to recommend is to approve a, the resolution to authorize Stephen Lott, Superintendent, to execute the sales slash purchase agreement of approximately 7.18 acres of, uh, vacant real property from Liebherr Gear and Automation, Automotion, Automation Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $484,800.
Motion, Gerby.
Gerby, BG.
Support, Gold.
Thank you very much. What can you tell us?
Uh, it's 7.1 acres on Tef Court. Um, I think it's an excellent value for the district. I wanna thank Liebherr for sitting down and listening to our offer, and why we think it'd be good for the community and good for the schools. Know it's not a Steam Center, but yet you'll, they'll be helping us create a Steam Center at the middle school. With the movement of the, the Operation Center to that location, I think it opens the door for Liebherr, an already trusted partner on our robotics team, um, and trusted partner in the district, just to create more working relationships with them. Um, they've been very professional about this whole process, um, and wanting to work with us. Um, it's compared to the first, uh, choice of property, this has been refreshing to work with Liebherr. And Gary Chan, President Gary Chantel.
That's excellent news. Uh, Dr. Lott should like to add something first before-
Yeah, just the, uh, complexity and the assessments and the amount of time spent with our legal team to try to get this deal done has been really impressive. So, again, Rex and the Capital Projects team, they just stuck with it, you know, we had to look at other property and, and, and at the end of the day, we're really happy about this arrangement, 'cause it is, it does feel like a partnership with Liebherr, and that's, and that's gonna be great, you know? They're able to, um, move a piece of property that they wanted to get rid of, and that helps us out, and it just feels good that we have a partnership moving forward with this, so. Thanks, Rex and the Capital Projects team.
Trustee Esteban.
You, you sought me out the corner of your eye, huh?
I saw your hand for like, two whole minutes.
Oh, whatever. So, I guess a question about, um, so, sorry, um, originally, um, just kind of a plan that was put out there. Can you explain that, and then, um, how we're now at this, um, possibly purchasing, um, this location? So, just, just to be transparent with the community and, um, yeah, thank you.
So, there was a piece of property across from the Bolin Alley, um, Station 300, that we looked at. First one was a lease, uh, with a lease, and, um, it was kind of, the office area would need to be removed, that was 945, and we looked at the building next door to it, which was 905. Um, and 905 is just, it's, it's a building that has, it's, I'm gonna say it's dry, storage, uh, with a heat, with forced air heat. Um, it has no office. Um, I thought our appraisal came in at the right number for what it was and what it is. The value of that property, um, did not, did not value what the, what the seller was, uh, what counted offer. Um, even the two pieces together, that corner lot and the warehouse, that we were gonna tear down part of it, and I did feel like it was more, it was a better value if we got it at the right price. We would've got 40,000, 45,000 square feet at X amount of dollars, I thought that was a great value, but not at double X. And then he wanted twice as what the appraised value was. So, this piece of property, um, it's twice the SEV value, but it's not twice the appraised value. Um, and they were very fair and upfront about that piece, and that's kinda why we settled on, they had, the, all they wanted was twice the SEV value, and so it felt like a really good deal for us, and where the location is. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna say we didn't have an option number three, but option number three was, I don't know what option number three was gonna be, um, so I'm very thankful.
I would just add too that this sale is incomplete, and maybe we should wait until everything is-
Correct.
Dry.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, we aren't putting it on our current, current property, 'cause I think that was kind of the first, um, idea possibly, so, just a-
So I got a quick question. I see May 14th, I think, is the potential closing. I know we've sold the bonds. Has that, is that like in our account? Steve, you might be able to answer this or. So is it, so it's in our account, so okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
Yes. There were a few signatures. So hearing no more discussion, let's put this to a vote. All in favor of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Hearing no opposition, we are buying a piece of property. Thank you very much, sir. And the final recommended motion is to, and I think you're done now. Thank you so much, Mr. Clary. Is a move to accept the proposed Jewel settlement by approving the resolution as recommended by the Trune Law Firm and submitted by Superintendent Lott. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Estep, support.
And it's support by Estep, thank you very much. Anything we need to know, Dr. Lott?
Just sort of how it played out. A while back, we were contacted by Trune Law. And Kurt and I discussed whether we wanted to participate in the litigation that was going on against Jewel in this large suit. And we said yes. And as it's played out over time, they've now determined what the amount that each district should get based on a pretty complicated formula. If it was in your resolution packet. And so tonight, we're, you know, if the resolution is approved, then I move forward tomorrow, log into, it's actually called the France Law Group. They're partnering with Trune and would say that the resolution is accepted. And then the case for Celine area schools part would be closed. And that amount that was in your packet would get distributed to the school district. So that's, that's the process.
Trustee Estep.
Can you, I guess, give a quick rundown of what the Jewel settlement entails and what that's part of?
You mean like why they were going after?
What the settlement is, yes. No, why we're getting that.
Oh, okay.
I mean primarily because Jewel and their, the way they were marketing materials to youth and stuff was subject to the litigation. And so ultimately, that's why. So they've gone and more or less proved that the way in which they were doing that was subject to litigation. And this is the settlement reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So hearing no other discussion.
Can I just ask one point, please? Who made the motion? Austin?
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was BG, Gerby. It was Austin, seconded by Estep. Thank you. And since you had the floor, are there any, is going to be any signatures required from the team here before the end? Thank you. So all in favor of passing this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we are moving to accept a proposed resolution. Thank you. We have a few discussion, one discussion, let me just check ahead. Yeah, one. Stemming from the Policy Committee. I just have a quick note about that. At today's meeting, we are going to be receiving an overview, if I understand this correctly, of five new policies. Well, four in one, this is a two-for-one. So, and those of us not on the Policy Committee have, had been encouraged to review the policies before tonight. But tonight, we're not voting on them. We are going to ask only clarifying questions, if we have any. And the committee will bring these forward for a vote or perhaps possibly even to rework them at a later meeting. And I just want to also say that I trust and respect the members of the Policy Committee. Having been on that for six years, I know you guys do excellent work and look at the fine, fine details. So I'm, I trust your work on this. So did you want to run each one of them? Or, okay, thank you.
To the, to the rest of the Policy Committee and to Steve, like feel free to chime in. You should have seen in your packet, I know the packet was long, this, this, this week. So in your packet though, you received copies of each of these policies. So hopefully you've had an opportunity, I'm just scrolling down from the agenda, to get to the first one. But hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at those. And the first one that we're going to be discussing is the wellness policy. And this, we worked in collaboration with the Wellness Committee that is comprised of a number of staff in the district. And. Thank you. As I'm scrolling down. I had them open individually, but I thought this might be easier to have them here. It's not going to let me jump. Okay. So anyways, if you have any questions about the wellness policy, clarifying questions for us, now would be a great time.
Just a quick note. In the past, we've seen green highlighted or something. Which elements of the wellness policy are changed?
So one of the things that we worked on with the Policy Committee meeting with this particular policy, and I'm going to open that one now. In particular, we worked with the Wellness Committee in adding some elements of social emotional support and working with community partnerships. So let me see. It's under, under E, or F, sorry, under F. You can see, do you want to? Yeah, go ahead.
So on the third page, well, I'm looking at the hard copy. But in essence, it's adding the, the mental health component that wasn't in the policy before. Talks about offering educational experiences with tools and strategies to foster positive mental health, such as student advisory, support time, parent education, classroom presentations, et cetera. Increase awareness of school-based mental health professionals and resources for those in need. Share information about community-based mental health professionals. And assess the connectedness of students to the school environment. Celebrate and promotion programs that improve students' social emotional health, such as well-being programs, peer-to-peer, and so forth. So that was what was added.
And just a note too, we, we worked, we sent this, we went back and forth with the Wellness Committee a couple of times because initially, we had named some of these things, specific organizations or specific titles to supports that we currently have in, in, in place. And we wanted this to be a longer living policy than maybe those organizations or clubs. So like, for example, student advisory is now called Hornet Time in the high school. And if that were to ever change, we wanted this policy to remain intact, to support students. So we changed that to student advisory. And so then whatever the high school or other schools decide to call that, it's there and in place and a part of this policy. Can I just clarify? So I see where you are, it says three of four on the, it's F. Where would this go inside? Because it's, it's not labeled within, within the others. I actually didn't know that was an add because it was the same color as the rest. So I was. I'm sorry we didn't catch that in the packet sooner. I can send you before, Betty and I can work together to send you ahead of time where it's green. Okay. And so where would that go if there's already an F? Go ahead, Susan. Susan worked with us to make sure that it was in the right places.
Yeah. Oh, now I'm like, because there's a couple of other, like, highlighted areas as well that I don't think pops out. So I'll go ahead and start with, with C.
Okay. But my, my first question was item F that begins, additionally, the Wellness Committee aims to support and improve. Where does that go? Because that's not highlighted, so where would that go? So it would become O and not F?
No, no. It's in the right spot.
Above that is section E. When A, B, C, D, E, all the way down, if you scroll up. And as you get down to the next one, now this is section F. So there's an actual section E way up there. And they're all in caps, and some of them should not be in caps. Some of them should be lowercase. Yeah, if we, if we could get a copy with highlights for any policy that has any changes, that would be great.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know that the editing capabilities in Neola has changed. There's an update to the programming, program software programming. And I'm having difficult people to highlight, which is why it's not showing up in the red or green.
Because we couldn't hear you, let's just note that our board secretary threw Neola under the bus. I understand that they were having editing issues with Neola. I understand that, thank you.
If we could just use Adobe Acrobat to get it highlighted, that would be great. Well, he's.
Yeah, I agree with Jennifer. Because I, I looked at it.
I can't read this without.
I kind of thought that the, the line that was, a little strike through. Yeah, that's what I thought was getting changed in the policy. I didn't think there's anything else.
I did find one slight grammatical error that, can I just send that to the team?
Yes.
Thank you.
The other, the other change Susan was going to mention, Susan, do you want to talk about C?
Oh, I don't have it pulled up now.
Oh, I have, I can, I can say so. It's changed now, it says, with regard to other school activities, the district shall. And it mentions now, free drinking water would be available to students during designated meal times and be available throughout the school day. So that's a, the green, sorry, the free drinking water is an addition. So that was also added to the wellness, the wellness, that was a recommendation from the wellness. If we.
They must have moved it down, because they struck it out at the top. And I was thinking, why did they take that out?
Because it made more sense, yeah, it made more sense down there.
Actually, now this makes a lot more sense too, to me, because that's not highlighted before.
Yep. And then the other thing is that under H, if you look at, this is under, H? It's under E. So furthermore, with the objectives of enhancing student health and well-being, it's under the obesity guidelines. So it is H under the obesity guidelines. So those will be, I think, moved to lowercase. I think that's how that needs to read. So that H, it says, the food service program will provide all students affordable access to the varied and nutritious foods that they need to be healthy and to learn well. And it's been added regardless of unpaid meal balances and without stigma. So that piece is also an addition. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, and I, I don't know how difficult this is going to be, I'll have to work with Betty to see how we can get the edits to you in green or highlighted so that you can see those. And then that we need to change under obesity those guidelines to lowercase. And, yeah. Any other clarifying questions on the wellness policy? Great. Okay, let me pull up 8390. So 8390 is, we actually have 8390 and 8390.1. So these are two different, two different policies that are kind of related. So let me just see. Okay, so the first one is, is 8390, and it is animals on district property. And so in looking at this policy, if you scroll down, I can help you find this one too. So we're going to scroll down to, so there's A, definitions of animal, B, definitions of service animal. But if you keep scrolling down to the next A, number five says, it shall be the responsibility of the building's principal or their designated to develop a plan of care for those animals housed in district buildings in the event of a school closing, i.e. snow days and breaks. So that was added. Or moved, sorry, thank you, moved. I'm just seeing the highlights in green. And then if you keep scrolling down to the next page. Yeah, this was moved. It's in the middle of the page. It says, if an animal's handler is not a student or employee, the handler must undergo a criminal history check and any other background check required for employees or volunteers by state law or policy before being allowed to regularly access district facilities as the handler. So some of these were moved because they made more sense in. Yeah, so it was moved under, under service animals or parents or vendors or visitors, right? Correct? Okay, so we're not flipping back and forth. So now that's been moved. Yeah. Clarifying questions about animals?
Just a note for the rest of the board too, that in the original policy, there was no separation between regular service animals versus therapy animals. And we received some good advice from, from Trune Law Firm about that. And that's how this second policy came about. So I'm sorry to, you know.
Yeah, no.
Spoiler alert.
So this, so 8390.1 is a new policy. And this is in particular regarding therapy dogs, because we've had an influx of therapy dogs. And I think they're a welcomed influx. We have Hank here at Liberty, and we love when Hank visits the board. I'm sure everyone in the building, the students and staff enjoy having him here. There's also a therapy dog at the high school and one at Pleasant Ridge currently. And so with, with this new addition and with a lot of research coming out about the benefits of these dogs, we felt like it was important to have a distinction between those. So with that, this would be a new policy. And some of the important things to, to note that we added is that down, added to the recommended policy. So if you scroll down under number two, A, we, we added the word adult owner. And we also added at the end that the policy does not pertain to students bringing in therapy dogs. We felt like that was an important distinction. And that was really the biggest change that we made to, to the policy as it was presented to us from legal.
Go ahead.
I just want to know, so this one looks different, okay? So was this also, like, you said the, the changes we made from the recommendation, was that through Neola?
This one was from, from Trune. So that's why it's looking different.
Okay.
Neola didn't have a, a policy specific to therapy dogs.
Okay.
One, one of the things that did come up earlier, and I just want to verify, you, you sort of ran these requirements where it says, standing, following requirements under two must be satisfied before a therapy dog is allowed on district property. You've talked to a few folks who actually bring these dogs in, and they're okay with the policy. They're all not terribly onerous, and they won't change their, how they're doing things.
I can speak to that a little bit more. We definitely do feel like we need some structure and organization around therapy dogs. Because we, as trustee Miller mentioned, we want to make sure that we allow therapy dogs for the benefits, but that there are some parameters that we operate under. And not, you know, just, just bring any dog that, you know, you feel like. And then we also added that part about this is adults doing this, because we didn't want, we wanted to separate this idea that if it's a student, then it's primarily going to be a service dog. That, that would be, it would fall more on a service dog.
Oh, yes, student representatives.
This is kind of more out of personal curiosity than anything else. But I was wondering, especially in the elementary schools, do you have some sort of guidance or curricula for younger students on how to interact with therapy dogs or service dogs? Because I know a lot of the times, they can get distracted while they're at work, I suppose, on duty. And I was just curious if we had a way to make sure that everyone is well-informed on that subject.
I can't really speak to that we've had, like, training for our kids with therapy dogs. What I, what I have seen them use for at the elementary level primarily has been, you know, like at Heritage and Woodland and some places that have brought in therapy dogs for, not, not every day, but they come in once a week. dogs for, not, not every day, but they come in once a week, they've often been used to just sit with kids while reading is going on, and that's, that's how they've been used, but we haven't really gone, I'm not aware of there's some sort of set training for the kids to know how to do it, so maybe that is a good suggestion.
I think some of that responsibility falls on the handler who's bringing the dog in, yeah, yeah, who, who basically says, well, here's my dog, and here's how you approach him, and here's what you can do with, and with, with Scrappy, and move from there, so they're the ones who take the most care, that's, that's their wheelhouse, that's, that dog is theirs.
I think that's a, a really great point, and I think, you know, there's board policy, administrative guidelines, which we're still trying to receive here. Maybe there's something that can be covered under this piece to, you know, include that, or some things in the district of how, you know, who's over, like overseeing that, so it's a good point.
Policy, so, so eighty-three ninety, you know, they just moved it to the bottom, the, if any animals handler is not a student or employee, the handler must undergo criminal history checks and stuff, is that something that we should put into this eighty-three ninety point one as well? I don't see it in here, and I just don't, you know, with the, is somebody going to say, well, it's a therapy dog, or is it a service dog? I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think we need to maybe look up at eighty-three ninety, and, and pull some of that stuff, some of that more legality stuff out of it, and make sure that this one is aligned with eighty-three ninety.
I would add that eighty-three ninety is-
Is the policy, this lives under-
Because I made that mistake too, of like, refer to this, and it was, yeah, so it's like point one.
Okay, so, so since eighty-three ninety is the umbrella-
This falls, yes, so this is just, it's a distinction between the two.
Okay, then that's fine.
Thank you. Shall we go into the-
Yes, okay, so, so over, this, this is a policy, these are, these are new policies, and these two policies, they're, they're, one is for staff and one is for teachers, specifically, so they're relatively, like, if you're looking at the two of them and wondering the distinction, they live in two different places in, in our policies. So, over, over the course of the last several months, there's been a concern from, and it, and it was at first brought to us by the SEA, that they were hoping to have some policy and administrative guidelines that could support what happens when there's been threatening behavior towards staff members. So, these two policies were brought to us through Steve as, at the request of, of the SEA because of these incidents, and it would just help for them to then respond. And just, just so the board knows too, Steve is, is also working with the accompanying administrative guidelines, so that this can be operationalized in a way that supports teachers and students in the learning environment, and sometimes outside the learning, the, the school grounds.
And one of the, I was, I was trying to recall, from the meeting, one, one point that was kind of made was looking into what we currently have, and, and it come up in public comment as well, but what we currently have for our own students, because again, it falls under, because it's point one, point one, it's going to fall under those-
Harassment.
Yeah, harassment policies, but currently, we don't technically have one like that under students, and I know that was something we were going to explore, to make sure it's transparent process across the board. Not the board, but-
Yeah.
So that's, that's why, since it's a point one, that's why you just crossed out the reference policy thirty-three sixty-two.
Yeah, because it already lives under that, yeah, you don't need it.
Okay.
That was my, my mistake, actually.
That's okay. The other thing that, that I just wanted to mention in response to public comment that we've had is that someone had asked or inquired, why wouldn't we, if this was, if, if there was threatening behavior that was happening, wouldn't that be a legal situation? Wouldn't we involve the police in that situation? And there have been circumstances where staff has felt threatened and have not wanted to press charges for a variety of reasons and the impact to students, and so these policies, along with the future accompanying administrative guidelines, will allow for, for protection, but also for discipline and restoration with, with those involved, whether it happens on the property or off the property, and the reason why off the property is, is included, as you may recall, sometimes things happen, and have happened, where things that happen off property have an impact to what happens in the learning environment, and so therefore, we need to have a way to respond.
I, I did a bit of a deep dive and found that this, the point one here, or point zero one policy is in place in a lot of districts around the state of Michigan, and some of our own county districts, but not, it's not everywhere, it's like hit and miss, so at some point, some, somebody decided, we'll not do this one because it seems to be covered, but I had heard also from the MEA reps that it would be nice to have this on the books, so I'm glad it's coming forward, thank you.
Can I just ask a clarification question on both of the threatening behavior policies? So, if you open it up in full Adobe, you can see the highlights, so I'll send you guys a copy of that. And then, I'm only seeing strikeouts though, in the, in those two policies, so there are no changes that were- This, this was a new policy. Okay. Okay, perfect. They're, they're both new policies, we didn't currently have these policies, so the strikeouts that you see, the one we had added the reference to the policy and then realized that that was redundant, because it lives under the anti-harassment policy, so we didn't need to have that, and then we also struck at the workplace because of, you know, our historical incidents that have allowed us to see that sometimes there's an impact to learning when things happen because of relationships or connections at school, but they happen outside of school. Yeah, and, and then, are we, are we taking feedback, or we're just asking clarif, clarifying questions? We were, we were going to say that if you had clarifying questions, it would be great, basically because of time, because we were bringing four policies today, I think that we're doing better on time than we thought, so if there's just- This is simple. Yeah. The first sentence, I would just change his or her today. Thank you. On both? That's, that's fine, yeah. We can make a note of that, thank you, we missed that, usually we catch those.
Yeah, Betty's usually on top of it.
That's actually how you can tell it's a new, fresh spanking new policy, because we have scoured the policies for his and hers, yeah, thank you very much, Jennifer.
So I also want to add, it might be worth looking at this, and maybe adding, adding possibly the anti-harassment, and we could like send a link or something that's associated with this policy. And then also, there's a point zero two, so point zero one of these two policies were not adapt, like, were not-
Were not modifying them.
I guess accepted in two thousand eighteen.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And so, there is like some additional language about reporting, protective orders, di- different things like that, that addresses it, so that might be something to kind of look at those two things as well, while we're considering the point zero one.
And I think, I think too, we could also accept the point zero one, and Trustee Eastep or any other board member could ask us to then also look at point zero two, and we could consider that, you know, at a later date too.
Well, I'd like to thank Policy Chair Jenny Miller for this.
Well, and, and Trustee Gold, and Trustee Eastep, like, seriously-
Well, I have to finish the whole sentence here.
And Dr. Lutz, and-
My point was that, it was, I haven't been there, done that, it's a, yeah, it's a very heavy lift, and there's a lot of work, and I appreciate the deep combing through that you did, thank you.
So, real quick, I just want to clarify for myself, so if I go back to forty-three sixty-two and thirty-three sixty-two, then I can read those policies, and that would basically, I know Steve is going to be doing the guidelines, but that'll basically give us the overview on what would constitute somebody coming and saying, oh, there was threatening behavior to me. I don't want it to be very, you know, we have to hone in on that.
So, so thirty-three sixty-two and forty-three sixty-two are the anti-harassment policies, so you could see where those live, and then underneath that, this is, just like we just clarified, service dog from therapy dog, this is clarifying, like, one element of that harassment could be threatening behavior towards staff, and then Steve's administrative guidelines would help to discern what constitutes the threatening behavior and how that is, how that is-
Yeah, because I think that's important.
Operationalized, exactly.
I'll give you a, a scenario too, Tim, that when we had something like this happen in the past, we were referring to harassment policies, but it always spoke about students, and, and, and that's sort of the impetus of saying, hey, there should be something in here that talks about staff, and then we would establish administrative guidelines if approved, but that it still draws back to some of the harassment policy language, so all of that would work in concert.
And, and we are fortunate that the, these particular policies, because they were Neola policies, they do have advice on accompanying administrative guidelines that can guide Steve so that this can be operationalized pretty readily.
Great, well, thank you very much, thank you, again, thank you. So this is the time for administration slash board updates, I have no updates, but Superintendent Lutz first?
Okay, the first one is to talk about that Selenary Schools on, will be on the ballot on May second, and this is where we're going for an operating millage renewal, and there's been some questions on social media about what this is, and so we are, Miranda is working with our legal team to make sure that we have language that we will be publicizing to specifically address this, and, and here's some of the finer points that we need to begin communicating soon. First is, what is it? It's not a bond, it's the Selenary Schools' ongoing renewal request for the operating millage, which is general fund, regular, day-to-day operations, that's part of how the state of Michigan organizes school funding as set by Proposal A in nineteen ninety-four. Now, some people ask, well, you know, why do they do this and, and all that, well, it's, it's the way the structure is now created, whether people say, well, does that make sense? That's really not for us to decide, it's just that this is how funding works now, and we have to, every so often, go back and ask for the renewal. What does it change? There is no change, if approved, it's a renewal to continue the operating millage for another ten years. Who pays this millage? This is another important one, who pays the millage? The millage, if approved, would be paid by second homes, businesses, and all other non-principal resident properties. So if you only own one home, you don't pay this millage, and we will be communicating that out, along with some frequently asked questions in the very near future. The next thing I want to bring up is just, and we've heard a lot about Neil this week, but Neil Mogdal, a really spectacular young man in the district that received this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar first place prize from Regeneron, the most prestigious science and math competition, you know, in the United States, when he was in Washington DC receiving it, this is likely never going to happen in our district again, so we want to make sure that we are giving Neil so much praise, and he's, he's a really neat guy in terms of his interests, not only is he very interested in science and math, but, you know, he talks about welding being one of his favorite classes, or the connecting program at, at the high school mean, meaning a lot, a lot to him, so it's just a neat story, and so Betty set it up, where Neil will be doing the student showcase on April twenty-fifth at, at one of her Board of Ed meetings, so that'll be neat to see him in, in action. And then finally, as we know, today is World Down Syndrome Day, so many of us rocked our socks to show support, and that was fun, so thank you all for participating. That's it for me.
I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Brown, Corbin Brown, at the high school. I went to a underwater robotics thing Saturday, and he was there with the, the team, and some people didn't show up, he stepped right in, helped facilitate it, did a great job, I mean, there's nothing like being in underwater robotics when it's seven degree wind chill out there, and so it was a little bit miserable, but the kids didn't seem to care, and they were the ones getting their hands wet, and same with Mr. Brown, so a shout out to him, I mean, he really did step up.
All right, I, I have a few things, I hope you'll bear with me, and I'll, I'll try to go fast. Number one, as usual, what, oh, Allison, you want to have her go? I think it's more important that Allison go, students first, right?
Well, first and foremost, again, I'll push the blood drive, blood drive on April tenth, I've recently discovered I'm a universal donor, so I, I will be there. The craft show was last weekend, I think that's the proper way to say that, so thank you to everyone who participated and came, and to all the volunteers, I know there are a lot of people from NHS there. Graduation is on June fourth, so if you want to see all these beautiful faces, you can come, come down and see that. There's an ongoing book drive at the high school, I believe it's a collaboration between the book club and key club, so if you have any extra books that you would like to send our way, we would greatly appreciate it. If you have any students in the high school or middle school, the writing center at the high school is doing its literary magazine this year, and the theme is masquerade, so if you have any artwork or writing or poems of any sort for that theme, again, send it our way. And as someone who's volunteered at Safety Town for the last five years, I think, I feel obligated to say that enrollment has started, and so if you want to have a nice pre-K program, it's a great way to dip your toes into the water for students and parents, I think, so.
Treasurer Gerby.
All righty, so going right after a student, I, you know, I, I always say this, but I, I am so incredibly proud to send my kids to Selenary Schools, and, you know, I, I read about Neil, you know, I've read about so many other things, like our polar plunge, that I, I won't take away everything from Jenny there, she'll, she'll speak about her kids, and, but, you know, we are invited to robotics, and I went to a bandarama for this, they, they celebrated their seventieth bandarama last night, and what a cool event to be a part of, our deck of kids, I, I just, I see all the things that our, our students are doing, and bravo to those students and to the staff that supports them. Number two, I want to wish everybody a safe and happy spring break, I know that I myself am looking forward to hitting the reset button, and we all deserve it, and we have ten weeks when we return. You know, Down Syndrome Day, I'm, I'm super excited to wear my ultimate warrior socks, and to support those with an extra twenty-first chromosome, because I think it makes them incredibly special, and they're incredible human beings. Women's History Month, right, I want to publicly thank, I want to thank all the incredible women who have impacted my life, right, like, I've been really fortunate in that regard. To do a little business, finance, finance is going to meet April eleventh, we're going to geek it out a bit, and, and Miranda and I were talking about this earlier, and really dive into Bulletin ten fourteen, which Bulletin ten fourteen, for the public's knowledge, looks at various areas of expenditure for the district, that's administration, staffing, buildings and grounds, as you saw tonight, and it gives us a ranking of where we are. And one of the things that, you know, you saw tonight is that so many areas of our district really do run streamlined in order for us to protect the classroom, and to put our money where that, in, into the classroom, so we're going to really geek it out with ten fourteen finance team, so look forward to that, all right? And that is that, so, and I think we'll also end up getting a little more knowledge about our, our student count, right, and we'll be able to lock down, and that's an important part for, for our funding, right? And then, the last thing is, is personal, and I also have something I want to add, so tonight is the second time that we've heard from Moms Demand Action, and, you know, our board operating procedures don't allow us to respond to public comment in that moment, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say something now. So, as far as how it pertains to gun safety in our schools, I, I think I've said this before, it's incredibly important topic to me as an educator and as a parent, and so I'm going to state out loud that I'm personally in favor of the resolution that was presented to us by the Moms Demand Action. For me, locked, unloaded, separate from ammunition, away from minors, just feels like common sense to me, all right? And, and so, I have one comment and then one formal request to the team. Number one, to the team, my comment is, I believe that there is wisdom in us having discussion as a board regarding our collective desire to pass or not pass resolutions. I think it's something we should, we should look at, and so if that is something that the team and the president believes, I, I would welcome that conversation. You know, I, I know that it gets a little tricky with regard- You know, I know that it gets a little tricky with regards to, you know, different resolutions, and what do we do with them? But at the same time, I think those that align with our compass and our district goals, and something as important as this to keeping our students and our staff safe, to me, is really important. So anyway, so I think that's an important thing, and I think it's a discussion worth having. And I've never been a part of that discussion, but I believe it's happened, I've heard in the past with passports. So. And then the second thing is, I would like to make a, I think this topic deserves an actionable outcome. And so I think at minimum, it deserves our attention, our debate. And so I am asking tonight for our policy committee to take a look into our current policies and any new policies we might be able to implement to be able to enforce, to enhance the safety of our staff and our students. We've done a lot of things, like I think about our informa cast system, I think about secure entrances, Alice training. I'd want to partner with our staff, our administrative teams, and ask them, what more can we do? And then I would ask that we think about and discuss at this table amongst the seven of us, policies or anything we want to do to be proactive about. Because I would tell you, I'm 100% pro responsible gun ownership. I am. And I understand that mental health is a tremendous part of the equation. I really do. But when in young people, you know, between the ages of one and 19, guns are the leading cause of death of youth in this country, I think we owe them a response, I think we owe it to them, to at least have the conversation and to have our policy leaders take a look at it and see what we can do based upon other districts, based upon M A S B, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess I'm asking for that at this time. And I thank the policy committee in advance for that, because I know I'm asking a big ask, and you're doing lots of things, but thank you, and to the leaders of our team and everybody else. So thank you for your time tonight.
All right, so I'm going to start light, and then I'll dig into some of that. So first, I want to just say that earlier this month, we had an opportunity to have a policy meeting that took a little bit of a different shape. And I just want to publicly and like with lots of applause, thank Cara Davis for her work in facilitating that conversation. Many of you might have seen, there was an M Live article that talked about that meeting in particular. And that the topic of that meeting was the controversial issues policy. And in the article, it just talks about how our administration, Cara, Steve, and really were able to facilitate a discussion that allowed for a lot of voices to be heard, but it was done very civilly because of our work with the Bridge to Civility. So since that meeting, I've had other meetings with people, and I've just thought about how that Bridge to Civility has really helped us to have some difficult conversations, but come together in a way that I think allows for a lot of voices to be honored and heard. So thank you, especially to Cara, for your facilitation and your time. Thank you to Betty also for coming and always being our recording secretary. But also that evening in particular, I know that feelings, emotions were high, and having Hank here really made a big difference. So thank you for bringing Hank. He always knows who needs a little snuggle. So he's such a beautiful soul. So thank you for that. I also just wanted to mention that, building on what Steve said, I asked my kids if they knew Neil. And it's just always really nice to get a student's perspective. And they just went on and on about what a great guy he is, and what a great, you know, welding. And I think, I know they mentioned connecting, but I wondered if Drew maybe mentioned that he was in some art classes too. I can't remember exactly. But just that he's in connecting and that they just find him to be just a really good friend to a lot of kids. So it's really nice to see a kid like Neil succeed. I also was excited to hear about Banderama this week. I unfortunately was unable to attend because I had a conflict. But I know in the past, we've had different music groups come and entertain us during our meetings. And I would love, love it if any of those music groups who are getting ready for their spring concerts, you know, had an opportunity to entertain us too. I did have two kids who participated in the polar plunge, and I'm extremely proud of all of the kids who participated in that event. And Celine, once again, was the number one fundraiser for that event. And it was fun if you had an opportunity to be there or if you had an opportunity to see the pictures that Tran posted afterwards, the smiles and just the inclusion that you could see and the support of one another was just really beautiful. And it was really fun. The kids really enjoyed it too. So, so bravo to the team who planned that. And thank you to everyone who was there to support our kids and sent pictures to those of us who couldn't be there. I guess I wanted to mention that our next policy meeting will be on April 19th at 6 o'clock. And we're going to continue our conversation around the controversial issues policy. And that meeting will take probably a more typical format as we take the feedback that we've gotten so far and from both the community in that forum, public comment. We've gotten emails, and now we also have some legal guidance. So we'll be able to take those pieces and start to have discussion at the table around those. And then finally, just to build on what Brad was saying, I know that a couple of meetings ago, after the incident at Michigan State, I had asked for us to revisit the idea of the resolution from the Moms Demand Action group. And I just want to, I just want to say a couple of words about that. That, first of all, I think that in a community that often has a lot of different viewpoints, the one thing that we all can come together on and all can have common ground around is around keeping our kids safe. And so I think that this particular resolution or the ideas contained in the resolution are an opportunity for us to see that common ground. So when I had an opportunity to talk to Susie Treiber, who was one of the presenters tonight, and really dig into some of these ideas, this particular idea and this particular campaign is not about who should have guns or how they should get guns. It really is about the safety of gun ownership. And I just want to mention that, that this particular idea has already been a resolution that has passed at the city council level here in Celine. And it has been that at that particular meeting, the Celine Police Department, the chief of police was there, and she endorsed the resolution also. And so when I look at the 16 schools who have adopted this resolution already, many of them are our peer districts. And sadly, many of them have adopted this resolution after they've had some sort of incident in their schools. And so I think that we can be proactive, and I think that we can come together. And I just want to highlight a couple of things that are in the resolution that I think we can all get behind. One is that we would provide, that the school district would provide information on our website or in our handbooks about the securing or storage of firearms. And that could be simply information around where to get locks. The police department has those free if you need to have a safe way to store guns. You can get those. Also, the Moms Demand Action group, whenever they present, they have locks and availability to provide those things. So we could provide that information. Another thing that we could do is we could provide information that explains the safe storage. So doing a little bit of education for parents or guardians around safe storage at school. And then finally, and I think that this kind of goes hand in hand with our, with, I'm blanking on the, on the policy, but the policy around safety that we've talked about before with law enforcement. Emergency, thank you. Emergency operations, thank you. I just left my mind for a minute. But the final piece of this was that, that we would work, that we would continue to collaborate with law enforcement agencies, health agencies, mental health agencies, all of these, all of these agencies that could come together to support students and families with safe gun storage and with, with the mental health aspects that go with that. So I do, the last thing that I'll note is that when Moms Demand Action brought this resolution to the first school districts and when they presented to us in the fall, it was the second leading, second leading cause of death in children. And the CDC, Lauren, I hope you'll say more about this, but the CDC recognizes that children are defined as ages one to 19. So when they first presented, it was second, and it is now the leading cause of death amongst children. So I do think that, that it's time for, for something different to happen. And this is something different, and I do think that it has an element of common ground. So I would welcome an opportunity to either think about how we work with resolutions. We did pass a resolution tonight. There was a resolution in our packet. But think about how we operate with resolutions or consider adding this into policy. So that's from the policy person.
Thank you. I just have a very quick note. Those of you who are, who like to see robots pick up things and put them down. I did the keynote last year. It was a heck of a lot of fun to watch this. And I got to see the robots up front in personal the other night. I would like to remind everyone, on March 30th and April 1st, we will be hosting a robotics competition once again here. It's a heck of a lot of fun. If you've got no experience with robots at all, just pop, pop on in, right? I don't think, it's free, isn't it? It's free. Come on in and get to meet the roboticists and chat with them and ask them lots of skill testing questions, because they can answer them. Thank you.
Allison, go ahead.
I just feel a sort of responsibility to comment on, I suppose, gun safety. Just as the student representative, I feel it is my responsibility to represent the student body. And I will say, I chose not to say anything at the meeting where we discussed the sprint shooting, frankly, just because I was just so shocked and I was so scared and upset. And it's really interesting as the student rep to hear, you know, kind of what happens beyond the scenes and to hear all these adults and hear all these board representatives speak about, about your life and speak about how, you know, people do or do not have the right to have a weapon that could kill you, that someone could come into my school tomorrow and, you know, do whatever. And I just think that every time we have an incident with gun violence, we say, never again. And we hold vigils, and we cry, and we hold our children closer, our parents hug us more, but nothing really changes. And I remember being in my classroom last year when we were talking about the Oxford shootings. And I remember everyone talking about how something needed to change and how, you know, scared we were. And, you know, nothing really changed for my, for my day-to-day. And again, I'm not going to comment either way on your right to own a gun. It is in the Constitution. That's not really my place to comment on. But I just think if nothing else, safely storing guns will slow someone down from making that decision to harm themselves or to harm others. And I don't, I think to certain extent, it is the responsibility of a gun owner to practice those safe skills. And I just wanted to provide my perspective on it.
Whoops. Thank you, Allison. Very, very well said. And we continue to learn from our student body as well as our, as well as our staff and each other. So I'll just add on mine. I wanted to thank Munig and Susie for coming back. I appreciate them. I appreciate their time, and I appreciate the supporters that were also in the audience. I'm going to push this a little bit more. So I don't necessarily think that this is a resolution. I don't necessarily think this is something that belongs in policy committee. I think it's a little bit more operational. So I would love for Stephen team to think about what we heard tonight and kind of dissect something at the full board hopefully soon. Doesn't mean we can't have a parallel path with a resolution or a policy, but I think it's something that, like, let's stop talking about it, and let's bring it to the table, and let's get some operational viewpoints on it from Stephen team. That's what I'd say about that. The next thing, Stacy was here earlier. I really wanted to thank the amazing volunteers for the Foundation for Selenary Schools. It is such a heavy lift to plan a fundraiser and to have it canceled at 1 o'clock the day of. I just want them to know that it is recognized, the hard work that went into that and the months of planning. And the students and staff will be thrilled, whether it was canceled or whether it continued. The amount of money that they raised is a blessing. So I can't wait for that to be realized in all of our buildings. So thank you to all the volunteers there. Allison mentioned the craft show, and I just wanted to thank Lauren and I wanted to, for helping me shop and put our little Selenary Social Services gift basket together. And thank every trustee who donated either a little bit of shopping money for us or a STEAM gift for the basket. So hopefully those were, those were helpful for the fundraiser. I got to be at Harvest Elementary today and be at Woodland Meadows and be a mystery reader in two different classrooms. And I definitely want to be a kindergarten teacher in a future life, because those children are amazing and beautiful and ask 400 questions that have nothing to do with the book that you're there to read, and I love that. And I got to dance with them, so that was very, very fun. So I wanted to thank Mrs. Horvath and Mrs. Gall for inviting me to do that. Also had the Coalition for Equality Community meeting about a week ago. So wanted to amplify the voices of some of the peers in our community that we have on that, in that organization. So from our library, something cool that was going on is not only can you check out books, but you can check out seed packets for the spring. Okay, you don't have to check them out. They will give you seed packets. So I guess you can get five seed packets when you go up to borrow your books. And I thought that that was really cool, that you can teach kids about gardening and maybe spend a little time outside yourself. So that was neat. Back to Selenary Social Services, they wanted to amplify the message for Easter signup for sponsoring families, if anyone is interested or would like some more information on that. And then we have a new executive director of Celine Main Street, and she talked a little bit about some events coming up and some new things that she's going to try. And I was particularly interested in the ladies' night that will be on May 11th. So I figured I would just announce that one as well. Brad mentioned, we're going to have a finance committee meeting. And I actually have homework for every single one of you, not just Tim and Brad and Miranda and Betty and Steve. I really want to talk about revenue generation. We talked about this last time. So we have pre-work before this finance committee meeting that we would like you all. I guess Brad's like, what are we, what are we having pre-work on? But I want each of you to email the team three ideas that you have for revenue generation for our school district. We need to long-term plan. We heard a little bit about the budget from Miranda a couple of meetings ago. You can do research on neighboring districts. You can do research on districts around the state or maybe in the region. And I would love to have three ideas from each person on revenue generation that we can kind of bring back to committee and reminisce on a little bit. So thank you in advance for considering that, because we can't do all of the great things for all of the great students and staff without the funds to execute. So there's my finance plug.
Thanks.
Okay. So I guess there's a lot of things I could talk about, but I want to, yeah, keep it sort of short. So regarding the resolution versus policy versus opera, opera, yes, putting it into action, specifically on SMART, wait, it's called SMART, yeah, Be Smart, yes. So I guess kind of clarifying, and this is something I'll be doing in my next point, but a resolution is not, I mean, is something we could technically do like in one meeting right now, right? We don't have it, and we're not going to do that. But, so it's not necessarily like a policy, right? Or a board operating procedure. It's, it's for this board. So in the future, you know, years, it may be like, oh, well, the board eight years ago passed this, but none of, none of them are on here, right? So it is more of, I think, like, a statement and a commitment that our board values this and wants to see, see something happening actively in the district. I know, you know, I think editing of, and I don't know if somebody is going to take this on, and maybe that's a communication. and maybe that's a communication with the admin as well about, you know, what, what commitments. So not, I guess not to the point of like, we're, you know, have an administrative guideline in this resolution. So how do we, you know, put that encouragement behind it and say, we want this, you know, to begin? I, I think a resolution could be a way to do that. Again, it won't necessarily last forever, but, you know, we are making a statement. Policy-wise, I am interested to, you know, if, if it's something that may come to the policy committee, I encourage, like, if you all have any ideas, you know, I'll, I'll look into it as well. Maybe it's talking to some of those community partners, but what is out there and what have our districts done in the state or locally? I do want to say that I, I grew up in Southern West Virginia and my parents were hunters. They still are. I'm vegan. I am not. But I, you know, I held a gun and shot a gun growing up. Like that was, you know, we'd stop on the side of the road and, you know, on the mountain and just, you know, shoot at some, some cans or whatever, right? But, you know, they're like, my family always valued teaching us, you know, to, like the storage piece, right? But also like, you know, how to handle it and how to, you know, not point at people, those kinds of things. And, you know, that's something that, you know, I'm not a hunter, but if my, you know, children are, you know, going pew pew, I'm like, don't point at your sister. So even like, you know, some of, some of those values about educating about guns as well, I think is important. Because if a child's not necessarily part of a family who, who, you know, are used to guns and safety, going over to a friend's house may not know, you know, what, what that means or that safety component. And there may be, you know, accidents, right? And for like, you know, the, the storage piece, it was kind of awkward for me at first, but I ask those questions when my child's spending the night somewhere or going over to a friend's house. And I do it with my family too, because they, you know, they're gun people, right? And so, you know, have a conversation with my parents, like, you know, it's here. It's like, you know, just that, that conversation. But, you know, I think it's important for us to take active steps in education. And I think that's something hopefully all, all people can come together on, right? As, as a prevention strategy. So the, the second thing I want to talk about is we had the policy last week, the policy committee meeting specifically focused on policy two-two-four-zero controversial issues. I do want to clarify that we are simply seeking feedback right now. Administrative guidelines, a draft has been created for the current policy. Whenever the policy committee, you know, either does revisions to the current policy or creates a new one or, you know, maybe a replacement. I, I think there's a misconception out there and I don't know how because last year I think it was pretty clear that we are not removing or, you know, seeking to just completely remove the policy. But that, that's something that's been talked about by previous board and superintendent in 2019. But, you know, I think we've kind of gone to, yeah, we're going to keep this. We don't know what that's going to look like. That's why we've opened it up for that feedback. So whenever you're seeing these draft administrative guidelines, that's, you know, I think we've hit on it already. Policy is the board policy committee, the, the board members. You know, we, we partner obviously with the superintendent. And the administrative guidelines are an extension of our policies. So that's where, you know, it gets, you know, like put into the district into place, right? So just keep that in, in mind when the board committee is looking at. We don't have a draft at all at this point of a, of a new revised policy. I do want to clarify because we like to call it the opt-out policy, that the, the language is actually request for students to be excused. So it's, you know, I think just words matter. And the, the policy isn't only focused on opt-out. And actually, if you look at the draft for the administrative guidelines with NEOLA, which again, that's superintendent, admin guidelines, but it didn't even touch base on the actual opt-out component. So I, I want us to like, you know, part of the controversial issue is policy. The majority of it is encouraging teachers to actually teach topics and how to do that with, you know, being respectful of, you know, not, not, you know, having that freedom of speech, but not like, just how to handle different topics that there, there, you know, there may be a disagreement. And so, you know, I think whenever we're moving forward and seeking more guidance, I would really like to hear from the teachers who are on the ground having to do this. I would like to hear from them directly. I know we did have a group of people. It was hard personally for me to hear or gather much from, besides the notes, which I thought were really helpful. But the meeting was so like short, right, and condensed. And I was like, oh, I want more information. So, you know, I'm glad we're kind of moving back to, at least for, for all of us to hear. But yeah, I would like to hear from teachers. I would like to hear from our students, in particular, student groups with like our GSA or, you know, when we're talking about identity and opting, sorry, excusing students or rearranging a whole classroom schedule for, to accommodate one student. I, I would like for our GEIAC and Shannon Washington, our staff member, to also be included in these discussions and feedback and conversations. So I think we still have a lot of work to do on gathering feedback. And so I just wanted to kind of clarify some of those things and to make sure everybody's on the same page. We don't have a, a draft. We're working on that. And when we do have a draft, you know, I think board members need to be more, you know, it is three of us working on it and, and be careful about speaking without, you know, without necessarily having seen the revisions or whatever it may be until we get to the board table. So I think, you know, just be mindful of OMA and, yeah, so I just, yeah, I just wanted to put that out there. I thought it was important to clarify misconceptions. And I, I, and I hope the committee wants to be completely neutral and open to hearing as much as we can from as different, many different people as we can as well. And I just, I hope that process is respected. Thank you.
I just wanted to highlight Senior Elise's presentation. Just really amazing. And I was sad I didn't get to ask questions about that trip because it is a strong belief of mine that being exposed to different parts of the world is really part of a first-class education that a lot of people just will not have the ability to do financially or opportunity-wise. And so it's an amazing opportunity for the students who are able to go and as much support as we can give to helping financially and otherwise students to do those kinds of trips with, with great teachers like that. Really was very impressed by that presentation. I'm not going to say too much more about guns because I agree with a lot of what's been said, except for that it is a public health and moral crisis. And one that I speak of in my other job at, at a public health level really regularly. And so I'm quite comfortable with like, hey, do you have a dog in the house? This is how we keep kids and dogs safe. Do you have a pool at your house? This is how we keep kids safe. And, and I would imagine teachers do much the same kind of safety, look both ways kind of thing. And so that's where it starts. Then obviously it moves on to when you're a depressed teenager. We talk about what medications you have in the house and keeping those locks. So it really needn't be contentious or difficult. We, it's a, it's a problem that's going to take a lot of, that not, is not going to get solved on one level and it is so complicated. And, but if we can chip away and save even one life or make more, one family more aware of ways to keep their kids safe without it being particularly burdensome on the district or teachers. Because I know we ask a lot of our teachers and I know sometimes I feel like, oh my gosh, there's only so many public health interventions I can do. And I know our teachers are teaching so much. So if there are creative ways to do this without placing too big of a burden on our teaching professionals, I would be very interested in promoting that. And thank you to all the presenters tonight and our great students and operational staff. Great.
Thank you, Trustee Gold. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda now. The consent agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
Brad, Gerby.
Second, Stephen.
Gerby, seconded by Stephen. I assume there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say anything else but aye. Thank you. Hearing nothing, we, we approve the consent agenda. Items scheduled on the next agenda, I can say one of them. We are going to be going into closed session for superintendent quarterly review or quarterly-ish review.
Right. And right now we're putting another agenda item on hold because we do have planned to update the board on safety and security. We've been talking a lot about that tonight anyway. Working with Mr. Ellis on a meeting we're having tomorrow, looking at security cameras. And so we're trying to determine if we're going to do the safety and security update in April or in May. And so we're going to hold on that with, with that being a possible scheduled report. If that doesn't play out, we're going to do a superintendent goals update for the next meeting.
I can hardly wait. So, so, you know, the final second public comments section, a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda for a future meeting. We have one member of the public who wishes to speak. Press until the green button comes on. Mr. Fan.
Good evening. Changming Fan is kind of late. Thank you so much. You all working so hard and just don't know how to thank you. I cannot sit over there, hold my appreciation and also just want to know that not only you do great job and also inspire me to speak up as public member. Several things I want to say that with the inspiration, especially the student, who I call them ambassadors, to reach far and reach out to not only learn this kind of education, but also teach others. Tonight, I want to put the word before you, it's called that S A Y A N. You certainly remember what is, oh no, what is Yana, sweet potato. Before that, S A, Celine, area, young ambassadors. Why I say that? It is possible and it's necessary and it is urgent. So what they can do, what I said at this kind of team, maybe student leader can be the chief, but have to have two parents and then the children or students, eight to K, to 12. Reach out to the different country. Why is it possible first? Thank the trustee Susan, Mike, Dr. Large, and I believe Miller had the policy travel far away and that is already a policy over there. That's why it was so successful. Secondly is the parents, the students, the volunteers, make that happen. You're outside the school. Lot of challenges, especially go to China, Taiwan and other cities, other places. And also we have the program, the content, the cost and F S A S. It is possible to do something. Secondly, it is, what did I say? Needed. They gotta know the things. The students really have to know. And then without the person to be there, you do not know what happened the other side of the world. Is it 30 seconds? You erase it. But anyhow. So thirdly, it is very necessary. I watch three and a half hours a day to see the war between China and Taiwan. And then it's going to be nuclear war before 2027. Nobody say no. We have to let the young people to help. So I stop right here and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fan. The next board meeting will be held on April 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn this regular Board of Education meeting of March 21st at whatever time it says up there on the big clock, 9:15.
So moves, Stephen.
Stephen moves.
I won't keep it there. Gerby.
Gerby supports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm waiting for it. One day someone's going to oppose ending this meeting, but thank you. All in favor. Thank you. Some joker.